All the members of the council and I think she's, she might even help out with the upcoming study session on this, which goes from six to seven tonight. It's a semi-annual update on the status.
March 2nd, I know, at 6:06 PM. And there are two of us city council members here. I hope, I hope three.
Coming.
There's one on the phone.
Can't start yet.
And we have two in the back who should be hearing this. Four. Excellent. Could we please take the roll?
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Here.
Councilmember Philseth.
Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Koo. One absent, six present.
Thank you very much. So our first item is a semi-annual update on the status of capital improvement program projects, a study session from Public Works. Director Eggleston, if you'd please take it away.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Fine and city council members. I'm Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works. And with me here is Holly Boyd, who's the Assistant Director for Public Works in our Engineering Services Division, the division that is implementing many of our council infrastructure plan and other CIP projects. And then also with us tonight, we have Fire Chief Blackshire, Police Chief Johnson, Chief Transportation Official Philip Cami, Utilities Director Dean Bachelor, and another of, a number of other staff from Public Works Utilities and Community Services Departments who are actively implementing capital projects.
Brad, can you pull up a little closer to the...
Sure. Next. So the staff report for this study session that you've seen in your packet is really the standard twice per year informational report that provides the status of all CIP reports. Today, we wanted to change that up a little in terms of the study session presentation and really emphasize the significant progress and exciting progress on the council infrastructure plan set of 10 capital projects. So this table in the slide shows the 10 infrastructure plan projects along with their planned budgets from the fiscal year 2020 capital budget and their current status. And just a reminder, council first adopted the infrastructure plan in 2014 when the initial funding was identified. And of course, staff has been working on the design and environmental review process and now construction on projects for quite a few years in parallel. We're now at the point where we have our first completed projects and multiple others that are either under or very soon to be beginning construction. This bar chart helps to illustrate the multiple projects that have ongoing work in parallel over multiple years, as I mentioned. So just to orient you, the blue part of the bars is the design phase and the green is the construction phase. And I won't go into the details because we'll be talking about the individual projects. But basically, when you look from left to right, you see that we're moving into more and more project construction as time goes on. We're kind of about in the middle of the chart currently. And then a little bit about the funding sources for the plan, which is very important. The pie chart on the left shows the funding sources for the infrastructure plan and there's a number of them. So you'll see the smaller pieces, Stanford University Medical Center Development Agreement, there's development impact and parking in lieu fees, there's various grants, and then there's the, the Infrastructure Reserve, AKA Capital Fund. But the most significant source is the transient occupancy tax or TOT funding that the council has directed to the infrastructure plan. And that's the, the big blue piece of the pie. So I think we all recall that the voters approved a 2% increase to the TOT in November 2014 and council directed that funding as well as TOT revenues that was, that was soon to come in from new hotels to support the infrastructure plan. And then voters approved an additional 1.5% increase to the TOT in November 2018, most recently. So all of the TOT revenues from those increases and all of the TOT revenues from the new hotels that have come online since 2014, soon to include the new Marriott Hotels that will open this spring, have gone into funding the infrastructure plan. And when you see the pie chart, you can see in the pie on the left that 214 million of project costs in the pie, which is about 75% of the total, is all coming from TOT revenue. And the smaller pie chart to the right attempts to show how the TOT revenue is, is directly, is going into the projects. So essentially, the smaller piece of 69 million is revenue that's coming in year to year and essentially funding directly the projects. The 145 million is the piece where the projects are being funded through certificates of participation with the ongoing TOT revenue paying the debt service on those bonds. Okay, so on to fire station number three. Our new fire station number three at Newell and Embarcadero Road is the first infrastructure plan project to actually be completed. And this is a view of the station from Newell Road. It's completed in the sense that almost all the work is done. The contractor is still there. They're finishing up some punch list items. I'll note, this project has definitely had its challenges and I, as I think we all know, it, it should have been completed almost about a year ago. But the good news on that is that it finally is done and we're projecting it to finish under budget. So that part is good. And then Public Works and Fire Department staff are very excited to announce that a ribbon cutting and community open house for the new station have been scheduled for Saturday, March 21st at noon, and we'll be doing more to get the word out about that in the coming days. And the other thing I would mention is that with this project wrapping up, we all know we've got another fire station project in the infrastructure plan, the Fire Station Four at Meadow and Middlefield. So the team of engineers working on this will be jumping directly on to getting the design process done underway for Fire Station Four. So while we're talking about Fire Station Three, I wanted to point out some of the features of the new station with photos in a couple more slides. So in this slide on the left, you'll see a view of the station from Embarcadero Road. The apparatus bay doors on both the front and rear are open. So notice that you can see through the apparatus bay to the back of the station. And that's a really important point. The bottom right photo shows the interior of the apparatus bay looking out towards Embarcadero. Now, the old Fire Station Three, which was built in 1948, did not have these two sets of doors to the apparatus bay and it required firefighters to back into these narrow entrances from Embarcadero into a space that was barely large enough to fit the apparatus. So a key feature is that the new station allows them to pull into the driveway from Newell Road, pull, and just pull into the apparatus bay and stop. This is quicker and it's an important safety improvement as well. And then one other thing in here I wanted to point out, the bottom right photo, you can see this yellow hose kind of dangling there. That's the new exhaust capture system. The previous station did have this as well, but the exhaust capture goes on the tailpipe of the fire apparatus so that when it started up, it, it captures the exhaust and keeps that from going into the space. So essentially this, along with the drive-through bay design and the larger space, larger apparatus base, base are important in helping keep diesel exhaust fumes out of the fire station living space. In these photos, on the right, you see one of the new dormitory rooms for the firefighters that's provided in the fire station. This, this is an important factor in fire stations to support gender inclusivity in the department as there can be separate rooms for male and female firefighters. And then an aspect that I don't know if we've emphasized very much in previous discussions is that we do have a new photovoltaic system on the roof of this fire station, shown in the photo on the bottom left there. I think that's half of it. And then we'll come online with one EV charger, parking space in the parking lot and all the, the infrastructure to support two more in the future. And then focusing a little on things that are kind of amenities for the public, one of the areas that we got a lot of feedback from the Architectural Review Board on was that the design should really make the fire station much more accommodating to the public. So this photo on the left of the Newell side of the station includes a little plaza area with benches and a water bottle filling station. And then kind of to the right here, you can see that there's a bicycle repair station there for public use. And if you haven't seen these repair stations before, they're kind of handy. You can hang a bicycle on them. They have a, an air pump and a number of different types of tools you would use for basic repairs and adjustments. So that was my piece on Fire Station Three, but Chief Blackshire is here with us and I know he wanted to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. It's Gio Blackshire from the Palo Alto Fire Department. Thank you, Brad, for that wonderful presentation and description of this new fire station. Very excited, such a wonderful building and an example of how collaboration is really effective and how we can accomplish things together. Beyond the firefighters being excited that they'll have a new place to call home, but it's really, the way that it was designed will impact our ability to provide a better service to the community. Brad mentioned the, the four-fold doors and that's one of the key features. The doors previously were roll-up and they could take anywhere typically between 14 and 21 seconds to roll up. And many times, we're waiting in the apparatus for those doors to go up. The bifold doors will cut that in half to about seven seconds, so it'll be able to get us out sooner. On top of that, with the response, we have the, we have a fire pole in this fire station. So it's the two sto-, two-story. The apparatus on the lower level, the living spaces is above. And to avoid going down several flights of stairs, there's a fire pole that's in the station and it drops them right next to the apparatus. So that also drops seconds off of response times. In addition, not directly related, but there's a new ring-down system that we have in the, in all fire stations. But the timing for this was that we would have the infrastructure to put this fire new ring-down system in this fire station. And what that does, it allows the, it's a digital voice that gives a notification on the call type, location, and the resources that are going. So immediately when the call comes in, the firefighters know what type of call they're going on and they can get in their gear appropriately as opposed to waiting. Because the dispatchers take the call and they're trying to get this information from the caller. And meanwhile, they're trying to do, you know, multiple things at once. So while the digital system puts that information out to the firefighters, the dispatchers are gathering pertinent information to help us respond more effectively. So that's shedding seconds off. So, I mean, it's seconds upon seconds upon seconds that this structure allowed us to have a better and faster response to the community. As Brad mentioned, it's no longer a backend station. If you've ever seen the fire station out, pull into Newell, we have to do a three-point turn to back into it and that's, it's safer not only for the firefighters back in, in the structure itself, but for pedestrians that are coming by. I mean, we have people out there that make sure that the area's safe, but the most common accident that we have in the fire industry is these engines backing into things. So we won't be backing into this station at all. So we'll be driving straight through. So that's really effective as well. Lastly, it's just really inviting, you know, we're hoping that people in this neighborhood own this as their neighborhood fire station and it's welcoming. We're hoping people are, are coming by more, whether they're fixing their bike, even the water, the water bottle, bottle filling station out on the Newell. It also has a dog watering area. So it's really inviting. We're hoping to be able to connect with the community a lot more and be safer and respond better. So that's it. Do you have any questions?
We're good? Questions, Suvian? Okay.
Thank you, Gio. Okay, on to our next project, which is, as you know, under construction, the California Avenue Garage. So this is a construction webcam view of the garage under construction. And this is the project whereby building this garage allows us to move forward on Lot C6, which is on the other side of Birch Street, to be the site for the new public safety building, while at the same time providing about 320 net new parking spaces for the California Avenue area. So the garage has two basement levels and four above-ground levels. And as of last week, I think this photo is maybe from early last week, but as of last week, the garage decks have been poured for the two basement levels, two above-ground levels, and half of the third level. So we're making speedy progress here and the project is on track to be completed late this summer. In addition, just to general progress on the, the construction of the project, staff are particularly proud of the efforts that were made to minimize groundwater pumping from the project and also as much as possible to mitigate the loss of parking in the area during construction of the garage. So just a couple things about that. The shoring design for the garage, which by the way, is the same type of design we plan to use for the public safety building, includes a sequester wall system that is able to block most groundwater intrusion. So instead of having to pump what we estimate would have been something on the order of probably 300 to 400 gallons per minute of groundwater for most of the duration of this project, this system has kept it to between 30 and 40 gallons per minute. So very successful in that way. And then on the issue of parking spaces, this is an area where Public Works staff have been working closely and meeting frequently with the California Avenue Business Association Groups, Group in their monthly meetings, talking about measures to minimize the impacts of parking loss during construction. So just kind of a list of the things we've done. It's included leasing a county parking lot there for public parking, leasing contractor parking spaces in the Caltrain parking lot so that we're not taking up spaces for the contractor in our public areas. A project we did to reconfigure it, reconfigure Lot C6 in advance of the public safety building, which added 30 additional spaces to that lot. Installing various signage about where parking can be found and also the valet service that we have in Lot C6 currently. So the Calav Garage, of course, leads us to the public safety building where after decades of planning and several years, most recently of design effort, the city is on track now to begin construction of the new public safety building later this year. So the building plan set was submitted for building permit review last year in December and currently the project team is working on responding to a building permit plan check comments. We're currently conducting a general contractor pre-qualification process now to try to identify responsible contractors who have the right experience for implementing this complex project. This, as we know, is the infrastructure plan's most expensive project and there have been a lot of ongoing efforts to try to control costs on the project. The earlier slide, the first one I showed you with the table, it showed the planned budget of 115.5 million. That's the all-in budget for the total project, including the staff oversight costs. That's the figure that's in the fiscal year 2020 budget, our current budget. There have been iterations of, of design completion and additional cost, two cost estimates since then. And we now have the final construction cost estimate. And with that in hand, the result is it's gone up to 118 million. So two and a half million dollar increase, some increase, but pretty close to where we were last year, which is good. Of course, this is an estimate and we'll know the actual final budget once we, we receive construction bids. The project is now scheduled to go out to bid in April and we expect to bring the construction contract for approval to council in August after your summer break. In more, coming sooner, you'll be seeing construction, not, contract amendments actually for the architect and the construction management consultants that we're expecting to bring for your approval in early April is the current timeframe. And Police Chief Johnson is here and, and has a few things to say about the public safety building project.
Well, first thing I'll say is looking at that beautiful slide, it's only fitting that a building that's been 20 years in the making is expected to break ground in 2020. So it's, it's really, really a great experience for us. As many of you know, our current building is well past its prime. We don't need to get into the details of that. You've heard it before. But it's really built on old systems and old equipment. It's really, if you walk into it, it looks like a Department of Leftovers with old equipment, old furniture, and really an outdated layout. So it should go without saying that our personnel are extremely excited about having a state-of-the-art facility to work out of. And really on behalf of the entire organization, I would like to say thank you, not only to each of you for this support of this building, but also to all the past council members and city staff who have worked on this project over the years. You know, the public safety building, the new public safety building, as Brad has described in the past, is going to be designed and built to withstand really anything nature can throw at it. And that will not only give us peace of mind, but it also gives us a space where we can operate all of our operations 24 hours a day, seven days a week, without concern. It will also be the home of a new state-of-the-art emergency operations center, which I believe Chief Duker in the back is extremely proud of as well. And it'll also give us an expanded dispatch center. The building not only is going to be structurally sound, it's going to create an extremely safe environment for our personnel to work out of. And that will help enhancing our service, obviously, in addition to the enhanced technology that's going to be built into this building. It will allow us to provide a service more effectively and efficiently for many years to come. It also has a multipurpose training room that'll not only allow us to have internal training, it'll allow us to conduct public safety presentations for the community as well as give us community engagement opportunities. So we're really excited about having that built into this as well. The building is designed for us to be our home for the next 50 years or so, so it's not something that will come before you again anytime soon. But it is a building that is very, very important. And let me tell you a few of the reasons why. For our personnel, one of the biggest attributes and motivators of this is the fact that nearly, well, none of our employees have worked in anything quite like this before. It's a relatively young department. And when you have such a professional-looking building to work out of, it's going to improve not only the working environment, the professional environment that it sets, but it'll also really motivate exceptional service. It's going to make employees feel, feel valued. It's going to make them feel respected and proud to serve this community for many, many years to come. It affects morale, productivity, research, and I credit the designers of this building because studies have shown that environments that have a lot of natural lighting and gathering spaces, as well as a smooth workplace plan, really motivates people as far as energy and productivity. So again, it's going to have a lot of attributes for us. The state-of-the-art environment's going to attract future employees as well. We, in fact, we demonstrated and presented this at our Workplace Hiring Seminar on Saturday to over 50 prospective candidates and they were very, very impressed with what they saw. So again, it's going to be something not only to benefit the people currently working for this city, but for the generations to come. You know, one of the things I will say is that we're without question excited to embark on this journey with you in building this new public safety building. And once again, from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of all our employees, thank you for the support.
Thank you, Chief. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Holly to talk about the next several projects.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. So I'm going to transition and focus more on the transportation projects in the infrastructure plan. The first one being Highway 101 Bridge. The, the bridge project is finally underway. The council approved the construction contract in last November. Site preparation activities have already started, including some tree and ground cover removal, as well as utility relocations. Last month, Santa Clara County authorized an additional 1.5 million dollars in funding for this project, so we're very excited about that. And we're also planning a groundbreaking ceremony for April, so more details will come on that, that ceremony. Moving on, next we have the Charleston-Arazzedaro Corridor Project. So Phases One and Two have completed construction. Phase Three will pick up where Phases One left off and will complete the two and a half, 2.3 mile long corridor. It includes similar elements from the earlier phases, including landscaped median bulb-outs, signal modifications to improve timing coordination throughout the corridor. It also includes an intersection modification at El Camino Real to upgrade pedestrian crossings and allow for a bike lane through the intersection, as well as a new signal at the Lewis-Montrose-Charlson Intersection. So construction is expected to start later this summer and finish next fall. I just wanted to show you some examples from the, the Phases One and Two. This is an example of a bulb-out improvement. This particular one is at the corner of Arazzedaro Road and Wilmar Drive. These are before and after photos. The before photo on the left shows a temporary measure that staff did as a demonstration to show the community and road users the proposed improvements. So it shows a white line on the pavement of where the new curb line would be. On the right side of the photo shows the after photo. So these bulb-outs that we installed along the corridor provide for a larger refuge space for pedestrians and a shorter crossing distance. It also allows us to provide a fully ADA compliant curb ramp. And then it provides a tighter turning radius to slow down vehicles turning onto the side These are pictures of the Palo Alto Los Batos Bike Path next to Fletcher Middle School. This pathway was a key component that resulted in the $1 million grant the corridor received. Staff worked with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, SFPUC, for nearly two years to negotiate this easement agreement. This is the Hetch Hetchy Right-of-Way, so it is SFPUC's land. We negotiated for so long to balance their concern of right-of-way access to their pipes and pipeline safety, but we wanted to balance our concern for excessive trimming and removal of trees. There's a lot of community concern over this regarding the large scale of tree trimming, mostly of oak trees. We held a community meeting last fall to explain SFPUC's easement process and our negotiated terms. Ultimately, we, we had our Public Works and Forestry Team do the tree trimming rather than a contractor, so we were, wanted to make sure we could preserve as many trees as possible. And ultimately, both city staff and SFPUC staff were happy with the results and we have a wider pathway that meets current standards. And then I wanted to talk about one of the additional features in the corridor project. The Green Stormwater Infrastructure Plan was accepted by council in May 2019. The corridor was one of the first projects in the city to include green stormwater infrastructure, not because it was a requirement, because it was, but because it was a good opportunity. In Phases One and Two, we installed five bio-retention areas. The photo on this screen is one, on the right, is one in front of Hoover Elementary School. So the, these areas help manage and treat water runoff from the streets and sidewalks. And then funding for these installations in this project were paid for by the Stormdrain Green Infrastructure Fund. Moving on to the bike pedestrian plan, council just discussed this last week, so I'm, I'm sure you're very familiar with it. Basically, you took the following actions. To implement, propose modifications to the Ross Road Bicycle Boulevard and the Marino Amarillo Bicycle Boulevard with estimated completion expected in June. Incorporate appropriate educational efforts in the Office of Transportation as part of the fiscal year 2021 work plan. And develop a community engagement process with the input of Planning, Transportation Commission, the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee, and the City School Traffic Safety Committee. And then lastly, provide a status report of the pending bicycle boulevard projects that reflects the community engagement process later this fall. Oops, there we go. The next project is the Parking Guidance System, the Automated Parking Guidance Systems, APGS is what it's called. It improves the customer experience for parking patrons, collects real-time data for parking garage occupancy, reduces traffic congestion and vehicle emissions of circulating vehicles. The first system we're getting ready to install at the New California The first system we're getting ready to install at the New California Avenue Garage later this summer. It's a camera-based system. Each sensor unit typically covers six parking stalls, and the system will display open stall counts at the garage entrance for driver decision to go up and down. So those are the sample photos on the right of what it looks like inside the garage. And then the Public Works and Office of Transportation plan to issue an RFP for the design-build installation at four other downtown garages later this summer. I'm going to ask Philip Cumey, our Chief Transportation Official, is here, and he has a word, a few words to add.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm really honored to be here tonight to talk about the Automated Parking Guidance System, because I know that it's something that's been on council's minds since, I believe, 2016. Yeah, or maybe longer, but I believe it was approved, the red-green lights in 2016. And I actually got to work on this project when I was here previously, and I'm really excited to be picking it back up. Because apart from the benefits that you see there on the screen, and I really do think it does improve the customer's parking experience, it also reduces circling and it frees up, you know, potentially parking spaces on the street for the short-term parkers. It also allows data, which is really, really important, and it's going to allow the Office of Transportation to maximize that data in order to better utilize the garages. So when we can better utilize the garages, we have more available on-street parking, makes it better for everyone. So, thank you.
Okay. And then the last infrastructure project, infrastructure plan project, is the Downtown Parking Garage. This is a five-level above-ground, one-level below-ground garage located at existing parking lot D at the corners of Hamilton Avenue and Waverly Street. Council certified the EIR in February 2019 and improved the planning entitlements through February 2022. The garage includes 324 parking spaces and 2,000 square feet ground retail located along the Waverly front edge. This project is currently on hold, pending review of the downtown parking supply options. And now I'm going to transition, shift, and highlight some of the city's capital projects from our enterprise funds. At the Regional Quality Control Plant, the new sledge dewatering and truck filling building was completed last spring. This build, this dewatering process reduces the greenhouse gas emissions by 15,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide per year, or the equivalent of 3,000 passenger cars. The plant also completed the designs of new discharge pipeline to San Francisco Bay and rebuilding the primary treatment mechanisms. And then other projects that are moving forward in design are the 12,000-volt electric system replacement, new laboratory options center building, upgrade of biological process to include nitrogen removal, and the salt removal unit process. Turning now to the Utilities Department and Water, Gas, Waste, Water. The big picture for Utilities is continuing the long-term strategy to maintain safe and reliable infrastructure for serving the needs of, of the community. They identified major CIPs for fiscal years 21 through 25, including ongoing water, wastewater, and gas main replacement projects to maintain safety and repair aging mains, lateral services, valves, hydrants, and manholes. They also plan to implement a new citywide GIS system to improve the maintenance and operations of the water, gas, waste water system. And then finally, for electric and fiber, again, there are major planned CIPs identified for fiscal year 21 and 25, with ongoing electric system improvements to replace aging wiring, conduits, substructure poles and equipment, upgrade the physical security and equipment at substations, and update SCADA cybersecurity, as well as support city's electrification and smart grid goals. So with that, I'm going to invite Utilities Director Dean Bachelor up to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor Fine, council members. So it's challenging times right now for the Utilities Department when we're starting to look at our CIPs. That's why we looked at this five-year plan on both on the water, gas, waste water, and on the electric side. So what we're finding is, is that actually, our engineering and our operational folks are extremely excited, because what's happening is, is that things are actually starting to come to an end-of-life period of time. It's not so much that we're just putting in pieces of pipe or small pieces of wire or poles and just to make repairs or things like that. Actually, what we're looking at is that we're actually got long-term projects in place. As Holly mentioned, is that our, our replacement for our water, gas, waste water, it's been an ongoing, long-term projects that we put together. We have some new ideas on how we're going to fund some of that and how we're going to hopefully get some better pricing from our contractors, so, which will be able to help us. Also, on the, on the timeframe is, is that, which is going to help some of the fire department issues around fire, is that we're looking at putting, building a 2.5 million gallon reservoir. And we are also looking at building, rebuilding some gas-receiving stations. This is where the gas-receiving stations is where we get our gas from PG&E. So we actually have four of those in our system, and it's quartered out throughout the areas. Some of the projects that are going on, on the upgrades on the substation portion of it is, is that we have an ongoing project right now where we lost one of our major transformers at our Colorado Station, which is our main station, where PG&E and we take power from. That project usually takes about, maybe about two, two and a half years to actually plan, put a new one in place, and we're actually doing this in about a year and a half period of time. It's about a four and a half million dollar project that we're doing, and we are probably about 80%, 75% done with that. We're also looking at other upgrades to some of our substation portions of it, where it's just end-of-life equipment that's going to have to need to be replaced. And like I said, so the operational engineering folks are extremely happy to start seeing us use some of the new technology that's, though it's available out there, as well as looking at getting forwarded in front of the electrification that we're going to be putting into our systems at that point. So thank you.
So back to me. I wanted to talk a little bit about cost management on these wide-ranging projects. So cost management has been a key consideration as we work on the projects, especially for some of the larger infrastructure plan projects, and with the cost escalation we've been seeing for a number of years now. As we've talked about, time really equals money, and I think we shared this figure before, but it's actually still true with the, even the projected escalation that's left where we, where we are with the Public Safety Building, nearly out to bid $350,000 per month for any, any delays to our schedule there. So I wanted to just briefly touch on some of the strategies that we've used to try to contain cost increases. And as I just said, with cost escalation continuing, the obvious first one of those is, as much as we can stay on the schedules that have been, we've established, to minimize cost escalation. Then on the Public Safety Building in particular, because that's such a large and important project, we've had a number of points through the design process where we've actually taken the step of getting separate, independent cost estimates, both through our construction management consultant and through the architect, so that we've actually have two cost estimates. Those estimates have sometimes been quite a bit apart, and that's led to some really valuable exercises where we've sat down with the estimators, our consultants, city staff, and basically talked through, why are these estimates different? What are the things that one or the other thinks are driving costs up? And that has helped inform the team about places to work on for controlling costs. And then, very related to that, there have been multiple value engineering exercises that we've gone through, basically where we're looking for opportunities to find ways to reduce the cost of the project without sacrificing its functional capabilities in the operational sense. The Contract Construction Manager, that's not something that we've always used on all our projects. Sometimes we brought a construction manager on just for the construction phase, but for some of these more complex projects, we think it's been very helpful to have them involved throughout the design phase, making sure that we develop a really good set of plans and basically leveraging the experience they have that city staff don't, working on larger projects. And then lastly, in this list, I mentioned earlier that the Contractor Prequalification process that we're going through right now on the Public Safety Building project, and I would just note that that process was very successful for us on the Calab Garage project. So last slide. Beyond the infrastructure plan, we're finally now at the stage of delivery for the council infrastructure plan projects, where we can see that they should all be complete within the next three, maybe three to four years, which is very exciting, given the, the time that's gone into them. So beyond the infrastructure plan, there are a number of very significant other projects on the horizon, and the most obvious standout of those would be the railroad grade separations. So just in summing, summing up for this presentation, I wanted to point those out. I think all of these are ones that have been talked about in council presentations in the past, but grade separations, what and how are we going to implement the Coverley Concept Plan? There's a number of different projects in the Parks Master Plan. You know, when the Public Safety Building is completed, and the Police Department and OES and move out of the current building to the new Public Safety Building, we'll have a project for renovating that police building. And then Junior Museum and Zoo Phase 2 is a potential project that's talked about. So wanted to point those out in the context of delivery of all the, the rest of the infrastructure. And with that, we're happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much, Director. I don't see any public comments, right? Great, so let's just go to council members for comments, questions. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. What a great presentation. Thank you. Very well done. It's been a long time coming. There was that GOSI website for a while, and it was a little hard to understand everything, but between the, the details in the attachment and then the overview today, I just want to say thank you. I think, I feel much more confident about, you know, the status of all of the projects. So let me start with that. And great descriptions, by the way. I did notice that the intersections for fire stations were noted. Thank you. So people who aren't sure what, what the numbers are can actually figure out where their fire station is. I'm a little worried that firefighters are going to start fighting over being at Station 3. I hope, I hope the chief has a way to manage that. Congratulations on the California Avenue Garage going so smoothly. I think we've only received one comment so far, having to do with construction, and it is just flying up into the sky. Looks like it's going to get a lot higher. With respect to the Public Safety Building, it's, I, I feel some sense of personal responsibility for it not being done yet, because in 2007, when they were doing the polling for the libraries and the police station, unfortunately, the police station did not meet the threshold. And I had to stand up there and say, I'm really sorry, but let us go with the library. So I'm, I'm glad that 13 years later, we're going to be able to finally do what has needed to be done for so long. Thank you for the Contract Construction Manager. Am I right that we did not have that at Mitchell Park Library?
We did have a construction manager for Mitchell Park Library. Ultimately, we weren't always pleased with their performance, and I don't believe we had them onboard throughout the design process, as we've had with Nova Partners, our current firm.
Yeah, having them on earlier, I think, that's, that, that sounds like a lesson learned, so I'm really happy to hear that. Speaking of lessons learned, I assume with Charleston-Arastradero Phase 3 that we will be taking forward all the lessons we've learned in the past couple of years about implementing things.
Yes, so we are.
That's a good answer. And then I just have a few questions just on the details here. No one will be surprised if I start on page 24 with Coverley. So we are having trip-and-fall incidents, I see, so just want to mention that I am looking forward to the existing condition survey being done of Coverley to address any safety concerns we might have there. So, thanks for that. And on page 27, it looks like Bolware Park, construction anticipated in 2022. That sounds like a really long time from now. Any possibility of getting that pulled up? I don't know if we have Director Okane here. Anyway, just a comment that I know the community is super excited about the new, the new addition to it, and that park has actually been substandard for some time, so.
So if I could just comment that we have staff actively working on the, the design for the project. I'm not familiar with the entire schedule that went into that, but that's a completion date, and since there is a, a design and bidding process, it may just reflect the time it takes to get through that, as well as the construction work.
Okay. Looks like on page 29, there's going to be a California Avenue Public Art Plan. That's exciting. I think we could use that. Page 33, I just want to say the Newell Street Bridge, for those, it's super important that that be aligned with the SFC JPA upstream project. I know the people working on that understand that. I just want to say this out loud for the rest of the community, who may not realize how important that connection is on the timing. Let's see, 39, Quarry Road. That just looked, the timing looked a little odd, because the operations of the hospital have already started, and I think Caltrain electrification might be a tad delayed, but I'll let you all work with that. And then just finally, 62 is on the water recycling. I know that this is one of the options for taking recycled water out to Stanford Research Park, so glad to see that that's there as we think about what's going on with the lack of rain that we have and needing to recycle our water. But again, thank you for an excellent presentation, and to everyone for coming. I think this is one of the things the Chief Communications Officer might want to link and share with people, so they understand, you know, the, what the community has committed to and, and what the staff is delivering.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Ness.
So again, well, well done. Thank you for the presentation. So a couple of comments, and this one for you, Brad, because my husband is often on Calab, and he thinks it's astonishing to watch this garage go up. And are you crediting that with having a construction manager, or is, is there some other mystery to why suddenly this project is sort of front and center, and people are just in, kind of in awe of the speed?
Well, it's running on time, and for that, I would, I would thank our, we have a, we have a good, we have a contractor who has a very good reputation, Swinerton, and who's been around for a long time. So they're being very diligent about maintaining the schedule, even having had to bring forces on to work on a lot of Saturdays to stay on schedule. So I don't think it's so much the construction manager as the contractor in this instance.
Well, given the speed with which construct, construction costs are going up, it's really important, and I, I think it's one of the things that we should point out to the public, that when you go that fast, you save money. And I don't know whether or not you've offered them any, is there any bonus for finishing on time or not?
Unfortunately, our system doesn't have bonuses. It, it has penalties for finishing late, but not bonuses for finishing early.
Sort of the reverse. So congratulations on that, because it, it is going up so, so swiftly. Going to the Bike Bridge for a minute, and since we're discussing, you know, numbers tonight, one of the things that I would mention is it first came to us in 2011. So it certainly has had time to steep, hasn't it? So, as I remember, and I'll personalize it, I brought $4 million from the county. You added another 1.5 from the county, so that's five and a half from the county. Is that all we can get? Can we get any more? Not to be greedy, but doesn't hurt to ask.
We did, we did make an ask from, from the county that was for more than this, and we heard that this was what they thought they were able to provide.
So we should be happy with what we've got. So, and, and, you know, I'm hoping this doesn't go up a whole lot more. It's starting to, starting to...
Can I just comment that a, a lot of the time when we're talking about projects and we're in the design phase, design work's happening, we're getting cost estimates, a lot of times, they're going up. Generally, once we have construction bids, and if we need a, a budget amendment, which in this case we did, that's our budget, and unless something really goes wrong, we should stay within that budget. So this is an instance where when we brought the construction contract to council, you approved the budget amendment we needed to fund it. And in fact, now, with the additional 1.5 million from the county, that will actually reduce our con- that will actually reduce our contribution by that much, and we should, it shouldn't go up further. We should be within that amount.
Right, right. I'll look forward to it actually being up and bikeable. So, last one has to do with, you know, what happens when you do this is it sort of brings up the past, and apologies for that. But I remember that I made a motion in 2013 that we should put the lights that we spoke about tonight in all the garages. And my motion, I think, was defeated 5-4, because someone said, "We need to have everything all done at once." And my reflection would be, it's almost impossible to do everything all at once. So, I was glad to see that you're going to start tonight with Calab and the lights. I think the public will love them. They'll hardly believe that we've gotten to the point where we're so modern that we have lights and we have spaces, and I'll bet we'll even indicate which spaces are open within the garage. Am I right?
Yes, we will.
Okay. And one other thing, I know you're all busy, all of you sitting there, but if there ever times that you think you'd like us to come out and see something, a field trip, at an eye goal in the occasional field trip, because it's a great way for us to see it through your eyes and vice versa. So, whenever something like that occurs, you know, if you go to check out the garage, call one of us and say, "Come on along," and I'll show you what's happening. Thanks.
I will definitely second that remark on the field trips. Our next speaker is Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thank you. Couple of quick ones and a slightly more complicated one. It looked to me like we're spending 1.3, 1.4 million a year. So, thank you for the presentation, by the way. This is very helpful. But it looks to me like we're spending from this 1.3, 1.4 million a year on Coverley upkeep. Is that, did I read that correctly? And is that sort of steady state?
I don't have the figure in front of me. I recall, I'm recalling that the amount that's contributed to the Coverley Property Infrastructure Fund is about $1.8 million a year. And we're, in most years, I think we've been spending far less than that. In some recent years, we've had a couple more significant projects, like most recently, the artificial turf replacement project that have probably driven that figure up substantially.
I did see it in here somewhere.
It's page 24.
Page 24. Yeah, that's at the top of page 24.
Okay, so I think you're referring to the Coverley Roof Replacements Project and the Coverley Repairs Project. The Coverley Roof Project, we program in every year based on the condition what roofs need replacement. In most years, I think it's been less than this figure of $577,000. Similarly, for the Coverley Repairs Project, that was meant to be kind of a catch-all to deal with things that might be health and safety issues. And there was kind of a lump sum of funding that was placed into that project, and that has been re-appropriated into forward years. So, it's not that an amount like this, $761,000, is what's being spent ongoing. And in fact, this shows that last fiscal year, fiscal year 19, only $84,000 was spent out of this project.
Oh, I see, okay. Yep. So, I guess my question is, you know, what should our sort of general expectation be in terms of steady state? So, you think it's a little bit high this year, and it's probably most years it's going to be lower than that?
Yeah, I do. I think typically, in terms of what we actually spend, because there are some costs for staff that do maintenance at Coverley that are paid for out of those funds, we're probably on the order of about a million dollars a year of the 1.8.
Okay, thank you. Next question I want to ask is actually what you've got here, which is the current police building renovation, which Chief Johnson did a good job contrasting sort of the new facility with the old one. Right? And to the point of, you know, I think the general plan is that somebody else will move into the old one at some point. Right? So, I mean, how much work is that? I mean, I guess I haven't scoped it out, but is it like a million, or 10 million, or 50 million, or?
The preliminary work that we've done shows it to be more in the 15 to 20 million dollar range.
15 to 20 million dollar range to.
And that work was last done a couple of years ago. There's an effort that's really just kicking off now to look at space planning and how potentially to program that space in the future, which would then lead to the needed design work and costs.
That's pretty sizable. I mean, that's the same scale as the Roth Building.
Potentially.
So, then my last, last thing I want to ask is, we're a little more open-ended, is, so, the downtown garage, which is currently on hold and is budgeted at 30 million or something like that, you know, a big, I mean, my air quotes, a big part of the motivation for why we were going to need that was we were putting in place the RPPPs, and there was an expectation that some hundreds of cars would be moved out of the neighborhoods, and they were going to have a place to go, and the garage was one of the places that they were going to go. And it seems like the RPPs have been successful at doing that, and some hundreds of cars actually have in fact moved out of the neighborhood. But we don't have the garage. So, where did they go? Right? I mean, is that the thing, I mean, are we sitting at here going, you know, jeez, the problem went away, right? And so, part of the big motivation for the garage, you know, is no longer exists. So, do we have a, some ideas? I mean, I understand that the vacancy is a little bit higher now than it was downtown and so forth, but is there any color and insight on that?
Let's see, Philip, Cami might have the intel to respond, but I think anecdotally, as Councilmember Phil Seth pointed out, vacancies in the downtown area. I would note, it appears to me to be less foot traffic than there has been in prior months or years. So, certainly a consideration. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, you know, the permit prices have increased, so potentially there's some more attractive financial choices that people could make, potentially Caltrain. There's some programs that are sponsored by the TMA, carpooling, et cetera. And maybe people are finding carpools on their own, or deciding to bike, or other alternative modes.
And at some point, we're going to take a look at, we're going to take a look at sort of next steps on that project too, right?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think PNS Policy and Services takes it up this spring, early spring. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also just want to thank you guys for putting this together. As you guys might know, I served on the infrastructure, the Ribbon Commission many years ago, and it's great to see some of these projects actually finally happen. So, that's great, thank you. You mentioned that there's a projected downward revision of the TOT. Do you know roughly how much that will be?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember, could you repeat that?
I think you mentioned that there would be a downward revision of the TOT tax in terms of the amount we were getting, and I was wondering if you.
I didn't mention that in my presentation. I was talking about the difference between the TOT revenues that are going in to directly fund the projects and the revenues that are going towards debt service on certificates of participation.
Okay. In regards to, since you guys have the slide up here, in terms of the police building renovations, I actually had the same thought as Councilmember Phil Seth on this, in terms of, does it make sense to be renovating the old building if you're building a new one? So, but anyways, that was kind of covered. So, it's just kind of, it's also not just like a little money, it's a lot of money. So, that's, that was kind of surprising.
Just to be clear, Councilmember, it's not for police use, it is for use by other city operations. That's a baseline assumption.
Okay. But has that use been identified, exactly what will be in there?
We're currently going through a planning process with the departments to see what needs are. As you and council knows, we currently lease space across the street for the Development Center, so that would certainly be a primary area of focus. And so, matching up the need with the available space is the next step.
Okay. Well, I assume that we'll know what use it will be before we start renovations, I assume. Okay. And, yeah, so the, I think the city manager mentioned that there's been a slowdown in foot traffic, and I think I wrote in about that. So, I don't know where that is on, in terms of trying to get a study session, but I think it's, I think that's important. While, you know, having parking available is good, having the restaurants and local businesses not doing well is not a good thing. So, overall, I liked the kind of summary you guys had on the infrastructure. The areas that I thought could be better was, and maybe this is probably a little bit on us, is to try to prioritize the different projects, because I do think we have a finite amount of resources, and figuring out which one is more important versus others, I think is important. Now, I think that's difficult, and it's probably something that we have to do in council, but I think, I think it can't be everything's important. I think there's got to be some sort of priority. And so, I would look forward to seeing some sort of session where we could help prioritize some of this, so that we can figure out where we have to put our dollars. The second thing that I think would be great to have on this would be to show the deltas. So, basically, what were the increases and decreases in the different amounts compared to what was proposed before, as well as the dates? Now, directly, we could go through all the previous old staff reports and look it up ourselves, but it's a lot easier if staff does that, and that way we could look at and say, okay, from the original estimate, the date's now this, or the original dollar amount is now this. So, we know what it was before and after, because right now it's extremely hard to look at or to figure that out unless you literally go back through all the old staff reports. So, I don't know if that makes sense to you guys.
Yes, I understand.
Okay, great. So, if that could be done, that'd be awesome. And I noticed that you have kind of like, you know, what was the project budget and then total actual expenses? And I think because some of them are further down the line, where some are almost being completed, some of them are just starting. What might be interesting to see is kind of like, are we ahead or behind on the amount of expenses? Because it's hard for us to compare that against the total amount, because maybe you're just in the design phase, so we should just be a small portion of the total budget amount. So, that might be useful for us to, to kind of make better sense about what's happening in terms of the progress on these different items. Okay? Is that clear? Okay. Okay, great. And while I realized downtown parking garage is on hold, I do think that, you know, when it does come back to us, I think we should look at, you know, not having slope fours and having carless, so that it could be pre-purposed in the future if it needs to be. I saw the comment about, you know, delays cost us more money. And I think perhaps for the past few years, that's actually been true, very, very true. But, you know, we just had one of the largest drops in the stock market since 2008, right? And, you know, coronavirus, all this other stuff going on, it's hard to be, it's hard, you know, also we had a trade war. So, it's, to me, it's not necessarily always going to be true. Maybe right now, but I think as, you know, if the economy softens, I think that could be very untrue. I think in fact you may be waiting, and you might be able to actually get it cheaper. So, it's harder time, but I think just because we've had the greatest boom cycle, certainly in our lifetime, and perhaps in the country's history, it doesn't mean that will continue on forever. So, I just want to make sure we are aware of that and keep that in mind. But anyways, I just want to thank you guys for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Vice Mayor DuBois, who is dialing in. Tom?
Yeah. Thank you for the update. We need to renew a lot of infrastructure that has served us well for years. And it's great to see the progress we're making on this multi-year plan. We need to stay the course. I think promises have been made to residents and taxpayers. We need to follow through on those commitments. And I've heard some suggest that we're not following through, but I think we really are. We have a large number of projects in progress. We have others like the downtown garage that are underway but on hold as we work on higher priority items. The large project list in the staff report lists everything being worked on beyond the council infrastructure plan. And to me, it demonstrates the importance of the business tax, as well as the Stanford Municipal Services Tri-Party Agreement that the county is starting to review. You know, we need to make sure that everybody that's using the city infrastructure and then kind of corresponding services, operational services that go along with that infrastructure are helping to pay for it. And I also think, looking at this list of projects, it helps suggest why a business tax should be a general fund tax, like so many other cities do. There are a lot of items that are needed by both residents and our commuting population. You know, there's, in this list, there's curbs, sidewalks, streetlights, traffic signs, pedestrian signals, fire stations, police stations, cardiac monitors. You know, the list is very lengthy. And while these priorities shift around, the need for these things never really stops. So, I think it's important to keep those things in mind as we come back to the business tax in the future. I mean, this is the infrastructure component. But like I said, many of these items also have ongoing operational costs. So, thanks for the update. I'm really excited to see the progress, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you all very much for the presentation, and thanks for bringing different staff members to present on their different areas. Agree with a lot of the comments of my colleagues, a few that kind of stand out to me. One is the issue of continuing payments to places like Coverley for upkeep and maintenance, when we wonder if there's a longer-term solution there. And as Councilmember Phil Seth mentioned, you know, what is, and Councilmember Tanaka, what's the long-term plan for the police building renovations? And also kind of what's the timeline there? It's not a question for tonight, but just something on my mind. One other thing, and the Vice Mayor just mentioned this, about kind of funding, whether it's a business tax, or the TOT, or general fund revenue. I think going forward, it may be helpful to begin kind of building themes or buckets in here. And I'm just looking at the future projects list. Railroad grade separation is an issue of another magnitude and scale for the city, and so it's going to take every resource we have. But as I look at the rest of this list, Coverley, Parks Master Plan, JMZ, some of the things in here like the History Museum, those kind of fall into like a community, you know, resident-serving side of the house, which may need some specific funding. And, you know, a potential business tax may serve other needs. And so, maybe not for this year's CIP cycle, but in the future, it may be helpful to begin identifying where we have previously used funding for these different programs and what we think is kind of most logically appropriate. I think that's about it for me. Any follow-up comments from staff, or? All good?
I think we're good.
Excellent. Well, thank you all so much. Great presentation. This is super helpful. And as Councilmember Cormac mentioned, it would be great to link this out to the public, so folks can see all the great work we're doing and kind of the controls we have on them. Thank you.
The public can look forward to a blog providing much of this information. So, thank you for your new media.
Thank you. So, our next items, agenda changes, additions, and deletions. I don't believe we have any, is that correct? Okay. Let's go to oral communications, where members of the public may speak to any item not on the agenda. We have two speakers, Liz Gardner and Bill Ross. And you'll each have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, it's Liz Gardner. Excuse me, I just am wiping down surfaces. I hope you guys did too, right before the meeting. I'm here this evening to, one, I did, I did want to make a comment about the timeframe that the parking structure is going up on Calab. I live in that area, and a lot of dust, a lot of concrete asphalt. Particles are being kicked up into the air. I do travel by there quite frequently, and it looks like they're not spraying down with water. They're supposed to be having hoses coming down from different directions. So, on my windowsills, it's black. I have a compromised son who has asthmatic tendencies, so I do want to address that as construction in this town moves forward. So, but in other news, I did want to talk about the COVID-19. Who in the city is in charge of preparing our public and the most vulnerable? And we need a sane, strong leader here. When residents are curious or concerned, where do we go? How is this? How is the city going to handle the influx of fear and offset this crisis? What, what is the city, what other cities are we teaming up with? There's 400 EPA students coming in daily. Finally, Costco, Walmart, Amazon are currently out of sanitizing products. Where might cash-strapped local agencies, nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s, who are on the front lines of this crisis, go to to get these products? Low-income families are here for the long haul, and the sanitation products can be very costly. And having these products on hand can really help the spread of a virus that is now among us. Is the city going to work with the county and the CDC? It's spring, many families are scheduled for rec and park, after-school sports, and other activities. You know, how is this magnitude of this community? You know, it's, it's as if, you know, our water table was tainted, right, with a toxin? So we really need to confront this and, I think, get underneath it. We live in a very affluent area, and if we do this, we can help other, more vulnerable communities deal with the situation as it moves forward. So why don't we just rally the troops, work together in a non-divisive way, so that we can confront and get underneath it and move forward as it spreads? So it's here, let's work with what we have and share our knowledge, share our education, share our resources among the city. So that's, I wasn't going to come here tonight, but I really, there's people out there, families that are very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. And in a few minutes of the city manager comments, we'll have an update from the city manager, and I believe our emergency services chief, on the coronavirus response. The city also has a website, citypalwalto.org/coronavirus, where you can get the latest updates. Our next speaker is Bill Ross. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm an elector from the past election, a taxpayer and a resident. I would like to raise an issue with respect to a position taken by the city clerk one week ago today concerning telephonic communication by another council member, Lydia Koo. First of all, the, and the city manager and the city attorney are aware of it, the critical portions of the email from a week ago, which is well within your policy timeframes for notification for participation, says, "Tom is already participating remotely from New Jersey, and it would be too difficult to have both of you participate by phone." There are several issues raised by that. First, you have the anomaly of somebody participating by phone on personal business, while some other council member who's engaged in city business, attending the FAA seminar, which is authorized and paid for by the city, is being denied participation. Secondly, your policy says nothing about limiting telephonic participation to just one member. And in fact, I can recall, and I tried to find it before I came tonight, at least one other occasion where two council members have participated telephonically. The Brown Act certainly contemplates up to six of you participating telephonically, providing that four of you were present within the city boundaries, and one of you is here at the site of the meeting. If you look into the legislative history of that section, that's to deal with emergency situations. Certainly, it's not an emergency situation tonight, but the decision is apparently arbitrary, is arbitrary by the city clerk. The authority shouldn't be addressed by a ministerial official to decide who gets to participate. I would raise as a point of order, as to an elector that's duly elected for this council meeting is being denied participation. I think legal peer review should be sought on that issue, like the quorum question that was presented not two months ago. I think the meeting is deprived of jurisdiction. I am disappointed that the elected city council member cannot participate. The legal position would be the same if were any other two members of the council involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now move on to the consent calendar. Do we have any speakers on the consent calendar? So I'll now entertain motions on the consent calendar.
I'll move consent.
I'll second it. So moved by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by myself. Any comments on the consent calendar? And Vice Mayor DuBois, speak up. Anything? None?
Sorry, I was just going to vote aye.
Okay. Would you please vote on the, oh, Councilmember Tanaka, thank you.
No on three.
Okay, Councilmember Tanaka is no on three. And if you would please vote on the board. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Koo absent, Vice Mayor, who hit Tom's light?
I'm sitting here.
Oh, sorry. And Vice Mayor DuBois saying aye, with Councilmember Tanaka a no on three. And Councilmember Tanaka, if you'd like to speak here now.
Yeah, I just disagree with some of the overtime changes.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to city manager comments. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Let me see if we get this. Cool. That's not my mouse at work, which is all the better. All right, thank you. Would like to focus our comments this evening to the ongoing concern, community concern regarding the COVID-19 issue. And joining me to make some comments this evening is our emergency services director, Ken Duker. So perhaps just by virtue of providing a little bit of context, let's see if I can get this thing to work now. Ah, very good. Would like to just provide a quick snapshot of what city staff, in coordination with our partner agency, has, agencies have been focused on. And it's in general terms in three primary areas. First, monitoring the ongoing local developments with respect to the ongoing public health concerns. Second, it's with our public safety of, in particular, emergency response services, but also really a citywide look at how we are prepared for the potential scenarios ahead of us, and what we're calling critical action planning within the city organization. And finally, with our public information efforts, as has been referenced earlier, we are really attempting to step up our communications through multiple channels. So we'll, we'll speak to each one of these areas, and Director Duker will lead off.
Great, thank you, honorable mayor and council, OES Chief Duker, D-U-E-K-E-R. Thank you. Good to be here this evening. I'm not going to read everything that's on the slides, but I will provide some highlight perspective for us here. So all disasters are local, and so is politics. Draw your inference from that. Sorry, I've been up for a while. And I will be here all night. So the reality is that this is, one of these planning scenarios, it's unlike an earthquake, unlike a storm, unlike a lot of things that go bump in the night. And this one is frustrating for those of us in the community and in local government, because frankly, most of the key data bits that we're all seeking are not under our purview. A lot of this is coming, not just from the US federal government, but of course, from overseas, where, where the bulk of the infections and serious cases have been to date. The other thing that is a little bit difficult for governments to efficiently do is deal with information that, that changes and adapts, to put it politely. So before we started this meeting, we were at seven cases in this county, and as this meeting started, the county public health department updated that to nine. So even these slides were just barely in the nick of time, up to date. And I guarantee you that over the next several days and weeks and maybe months, hopefully not longer, we'll continue to have an ongoing challenge of keeping on top of the essential elements of information. The other bit of that is, what are we going to do about that? And the "we" is the community. There's a lot of legitimate anxiety and reasonableness about what, what should we be doing to plan and prepare? Those of you who've been on council before have been through some, some rough times and rough scenarios, whether it is a natural disaster or whatever. This is already, as Councilmember Tanaka alluded to, disrupted global markets, stock markets, supply chain. Even if we don't have infections in Palo Alto, we are going to feel it, one way or the other. So our planning challenges are kind of on the board, but emphasis on local. We are very resource-rich, as the other speaker tonight alluded to. We have, even on council, medical experts, people who have degrees in nursing and so forth. And we're, we have a very good abundance of people who do know what they're doing. That said, we don't need a bunch of armchair quarterbacks, and we have to resist the temptation. A lot of people are asking, well, who's in charge? Well, in this county, Dr. Sarah Cody, Palo Alto resident, is the chief, the public health officer, and the county public health department is the subject matter expert with respect to epidemiology and biosurveillance. Who's in charge here in the city as far as disaster response and recovery? It's the city manager and myself, very clearly, about how we're going to operate this. The county, as of this morning, early, activated their emergency operations center. They were the first county in this state to proclaim a local emergency, not because anybody believes that we're on the edge of Armageddon, but because we want to put structures in place that facilitate the efficient exchange of information and coordination and efficiency among all these government and certain non-government players. What we're doing here in Palo Alto, we're talking with the Chamber of Commerce. Former Mayor Kleinberg and I were trading email as we awaited this agenda item. We're in regular contact with Stanford Hospital, Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and so forth. So those are some of our near-term actions. Mr. Shikata mentioned a little bit about our Critical Action Team, CAT. It's kind of a common best practice. It actually ironically comes from hospitals, and it's been adapted to other entities. Essentially, what we're trying to do is gain situational awareness of what's going on around us, figure out what we need to plan for happening now, what could happen, contingencies, and think about also, considering that we are an employer, and many of us are also residents here, what are we going to do? We have to maintain our core operations and services. So those are the highlights of what we've been doing. Mr. Shikata has the remainder of the slides, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Let's see. Then moving to our active advice, you know, much of this, again, is a repeat, perhaps common sense to a certain extent, but also the basic means by which we as individuals can participate in effective prevention. And as stated here, you know, staying home if you're sick, washing your hands often with soap and water and alcohol-based sanitizers. We are also doing the same, certainly as an organization, but individually, with respect to wiping down surfaces that are shared, as well as travel instructions that as visitors or returning residents are coming back from countries that have experienced higher incidence of actual infection, to provide this isolation during periods as stated, as well as common flu season hygiene practices. Now, these, again, seem as common sense, but again, these are the messages that we are sharing, both with the community as well as with our employees. Then, a little more specifically with respect to our city operations, and how we have been ramping up our organizational response to concerns. Noting first here, 911 dispatcher call protocols. These have been expanded, that call takers are now adding as a part of their scripts questions that will increase our ability to ensure that our first responders know situations that they're moving into, and that help ensure that we're providing the appropriate response depending on the call. We are evaluating service delivery modifications, including potential scenarios in which we may have reductions in staffing availability. Then that could result in our need to prioritize certain services, both in terms of response to calls for services, as well as ongoing programs that are provided by the city. Now, we're not at the point that we're needing to activate that yet, but we're certainly in the mode of planning for the possibilities. And again, certainly, as has been the general guidance, increase of ongoing support for telework, whether it's teleconferences, the ability to work remotely. And in particular, for areas where we might, well, we certainly can't accommodate telework, such as our utilities, field services, preparation for if we were to have a shortage of availability of staff, to prepare for potential scenarios, such as providing overnet accommodations for staff that are active and available, to reduce their commute times, as well as increase their availability for out-of-office or out-of-hour responses as necessary. And along the same lines, increase in our contractual services to increase our availability, at least of the pool, of services that could be provided after hours. So, you know, those are the types of things that you would expect that we are activating, while recognizing there are a whole variety of scenarios that could be ahead of us. So really, making the best planning we can for the contingencies that can be anticipated, supplying a protective gear, and that includes not only first responders, but ongoing staff that are in the field, perhaps encountering interactions that would be well-served through gloves, again, wiping down surfaces, as the case has been described. And on an ongoing basis, ensuring that, that that's a standard practice now, providing sanitizers and cleaning services in our own facilities here in City Hall, and other work areas that are shared. And as noted, Ken pointing out, our interdepartmental coordination, whether it's our critical actions, as well as ongoing communication and coordination necessary among departments, including procurement. I would note that the city, perhaps not surprisingly, is really not in any better position to acquire additional supplies than any other company in town. We don't have any ability to jump the line, so to speak. So we are a part of this larger community of organizations that does need to work together and maintain communications, both on an inter-agency basis, as well as with our private sector partners. And as we've noted, and I'll touch on quickly, we're expanding our public information. So recognizing that our residents do look to the city as a point of contact, we need to manage those expectations, and while at the same time, providing information we And I may get a chance to demonstrate our proper hygiene practices here, but since that sneeze went back away, I will just go forward and point out, you know, some of the ways that the community can stay informed. We have, as the mayor pointed out, set up a specific webpage with updates from the county, Centers for Disease Control, and other sources. We will be providing daily updates to this webpage, as well as pushing material elsewhere in order to provide a predictable way for our residents to know that we've provided updates, information such as it is. As Ken pointed out, updated today, from seven to nine, as the case may be. But again, recognizing that really everyone needs to understand that there are multiple sources of information, and that we are tracking them as well as anyone could do on their own. We will be also pushing printed materials out, recognizing that not everyone gets their information online or through social media, to try to provide information in a straightforward manner, in a variety of formats. And we're also adding a frequently asked questions section, and certainly look forward to council's input, and what those frequent questions are likely to be in the days and weeks ahead, and in all likelihood, months. So with that, I just want to close with a, an example of the types of information that we'll be providing. Again, largely based on the common, basic hygiene tips and suggestions that apply to all of us, and we'll be building on that going forward. And so with that, just final slide here, some basic touchpoints that we will be using as our clearinghouse for information. So with that, I do have a couple of, just perhaps one other item under city manager's comments.
Should we just, I see some of my colleagues want to make a few comments. Can we just pause on this one for a moment?
Sure. Sure.
And then go to the rest. First of all, chief and city manager, thank you for bringing this forward. Obviously, an issue of heightened concern for Palo Alto residents and businesses. Just a couple of quick things to emphasize. I think daily updates are really important, and as we, if we can, push those out digitally as well, just get to as many people as possible. You quickly or briefly mentioned working with the business community. I would really encourage us to do that, and like, I know we don't have a perfect business registry, but whatever networks we can leverage there to, you know, send the previous flyer to those businesses, have them posted up to their workers as well. We do want to make sure people are prepared but not frightened, and I know you're taking that mission very seriously. I know myself and probably some others up here have been talking, at least to PAUSD, to understand what they're doing, what they're working on, similar efforts underway there, but just do want to emphasize to the community, as the chief mentioned, the lead agency here is the county public health authority. And so we are following their lead and doing what we can to build on top of it. Councilmember McCormack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Chief Duker and Mr. Chikata for sharing that important information. I want to emphasize the connection with the schools. We have a large population of people who are, you know, very concerned about their kids, who fortunately don't seem to be, you know, doesn't seem to be as hitting children quite as hard. I think the other population we might just want to think a little bit about is the senior population, especially to the extent that we have seniors. If you look at what's happening in Kirkland, of course, that's a huge concern. So to the extent that our process can take that into consideration, I know that the community appreciates it.
I would definitely like to recognize that and point out that we are in our communications focus specifically recognizing that you might be able to describe it as market segmentation in terms of our communication methods and messages that would recognize all of the various segments of the community that we want to focus on.
Thank you, Councilmember Ness.
So Ed, you may have said something about this. I don't remember it, but as far as more sanitizers and enhanced cleaning, what's our plan for getting that out into the building?
We are in progress, certainly are already established some enhanced practices. As I mentioned earlier, we're a consumer, like every other consumer, and as you've noticed, and everyone I suspect who's been to a store looking for cleaning supplies recognizes it's in short supply. So we are tapping all sources we can to maximize our availability, and should we happen upon an excess supply, then we'll certainly look at whether it makes sense for us to then be able to be a source for others.
So I don't mean this as an advertisement, but I understand people have been using Amazon liberally to get that from other parts of the country, which is kind of interesting. So I'm not suggesting that, but I do know that it's, it has been difficult, and I've heard there are long lines at many of the big box stores in order to get supplies into the house. So we are looking for more of those sanitizers and so forth.
Yes, we do believe we will need to continue to procure additional supplies.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you for your update on this. It's very timely. I have customers in Japan, and they're all up in arms about this, so I think it's good that we're getting ahead of it. One just comment is that, you know, a lot of times, you know, people are sick, they still go to work because they were trying to do their job, but I think one thing as a city we need to get better at is actually teleconferencing. So a lot of companies started doing Zoom, you know, if you don't feel well at all, just, you know, try to teleconference in. I did hear the, one of the speakers talk about our, Councilmember Ku, but I think, you know, this day and age with Zoom and all the other great teleconferencing technologies, we should be able to make it happen, even for one of us who has the sniffles or doesn't feel well, we should be able to do it easily. And so I find that actually kind of disappointing that Councilmember Ku wasn't able to call in for this, because I do know that in the past, there's been two of us who've called in. I think myself and Tom have called in together, so don't know why we couldn't make it happen tonight. But I think just to kind of prevent the spread of coronavirus, I think it's, I think we want to make it easy for people to teleconference, not harder. So I think that's, you know, if you guys can't figure out how to use Zoom, I think now is a good time to figure out how to use it or some other service like that.
Thank you, and back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, just in terms of one other item I wanted to note, which is unrelated, part of the work ahead, I think, for us as an organization and as a community is to balance our attention and focus on addressing the issue at hand with normalcy. And so in the vein of normalcy, I will note that our outreach on the potential business tax is ongoing, and that in response to council direction, staff and our consultants are continuing this effort, and would note that among our outreach, we are doing small group meetings with Chamber and Stanford Research Park upcoming. Also, there's an online survey that I mentioned previously. Would note that we sent a reminder out to businesses about this online survey, which is scheduled to end this Wednesday, and also that we have added a provision in this survey that businesses can respond anonymously by providing a phone number to our consultant that is conducting the outreach, that allows their responses to be recorded while not connected to the business itself. And finally, just like to note, perhaps an event that doesn't need to be reminding, a reminder to folks, but that the State of the City address will be coming up this Wednesday at 7:00 PM. Public is invited to hear Mayor Feins' State of the City address at Mitchell Park Community Center. I actually believe our opening may be at 6:30, and we are all prepared to participate in that. Also, I'm not sure this was mentioned earlier, but I did want to just acknowledge that Councilmember Ku is, we know, attending the UC Davis Aviation Noise and Emissions Symposium, which is a part of her responsibilities for the city council, and as such, wanted to acknowledge that was the reason for her not being here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is that all?
That's it.
Thank you. All right. That finishes up our city manager comments. We're about 10, 15 minutes behind schedule, but I'm just going to call a 10-minute break. Thank you, chief, as well. So let's be back here at 7:55 or so. Thank you all.
Downtown Palo Alto on what is election eve of Super Tuesday on what has been an incredible day in politics as Bernie Sanders did a rally in San Jose yesterday. He also has another rally in the Bay Area coming up, and Pete Buttigieg has pulled out of the race and endorsed Joe Biden, and he was the winner. Buttigieg was the winner of Iowa, and this is a big surprise that he would pull out and then endorse Biden, that Amy Klobuchar also has pulled out as well. And so now you have two key people who have left the race. The mayor of South Bend pulling out is certainly a surprise, and really very unique that you would have on the edge of Super Tuesday and the California primary, which now joins Super Tuesday, which is an immense number of delegates. I think California has like 400 and something delegates. Then there's Texas with 280, and then there's, there are a myriad of other states that can go all over the place, that Democratic candidates would pull out before Super Tuesday or even before the California primary. So that this is a signal that there's a coalition of support for Biden fearing a Bernie Sanders runaway tomorrow. So I think that'll be, that'll be interesting. Here in Palo Alto and in the county and here in the Bay Area, the news of the coronavirus, the COVID-19, as the media now is referring to it, is, had a big outbreak in Washington, DC, or Washington State, rather, in a nursing home in Kirkland that was referred to by Councilmember McCormack when the city manager and addressed what was being done locally in Palo Alto and protecting those who are vulnerable. There also are more cases in the county. Those were two people who came from Egypt, who had, who had been traveling to Egypt, who had compromised some chronic problems, and also a third case is an adult woman who's also had some chronic problems. That now two deaths in Washington, I think that has grown since even we've been on the air. I mean, it's, the coronavirus is all the time now as it is moving through the United States, and there's some talk that Washington State may have had, maybe on the verge of an outbreak there, and it could have been among the population for the last six weeks or so. So there's a concern about that, and it was the city manager who addressed a lot of questions about the state of emergency, emergency lines being set up. It's not an alarming thing, but that everyone is getting ready for more and more of this as it moves along. So there also was two students from Palo Alto schools that were sent home because they thought they were contagious, so that's interesting as well. So the virus is, you know, it's obviously, it is all over the world, and so we have the virus. We've had, there are, President Trump has put through restrictions on travel to only certain parts of Korea and certain parts of Italy that you can go to, and banning flights to other countries like Iran and China. So the president also met with leaders of pharmaceutical companies as well, and Vice President Pence is the head of the, sort of the task force. He was on all the news media yesterday, talking about what is being done with this crisis. So we've got politics, and we've got local politics as well, and we also have a council meeting tonight, and there's anxiety about the outbreak, but there also has been people voting. They've been voting, well, the last week, people can go to certain areas and vote, certain city halls, you can vote. You can also vote by mail, so people have been voting. One thing that was sort of brought up in the previous show was, the Matt and Chris Show, was about people being, feeling bitter about candidates they probably voted for, and now they've dropped out before there's any results in the election, and which is, to me, particularly a Democratic primary, which is always so fought out. I mean, you know, whether it was Jerry Brown versus Bill Clinton, or Bobby Kennedy and Eugene McCarthy and Hubert Humphrey, or, I mean, so many of the, you know, the great rivalries for nominations in the past that go through the Democratic process for candidates, particularly a candidate who's won Iowa, even though Iowa was a controversial win, to just bail out and endorse, and I think before a big, a big Super Tuesday. It is interesting that there are people who have to be, you know, have to feel that they've been betrayed just in their vote, that this would take place. I mean, usually, you know, I mean, Tom Steyer, who in his ads, his ads had all about beating, I guess, the previous show, Chris and Matt were saying, "I'm sick of seeing the Tom Steyer ads." Well, he's paid for those ads. They've paid for those ads, so those ads are going to run, and they're still going to run because he's paid for them, and he's already pulled out, but the fact that, you know, in the ads, he has him with Governor Schwarzenegger and local activists in California and what he did in California, and he doesn't even stand for election in California. Of course, he'll still be on the ballot, but it's just an amazing turnaround and something I've never seen with Democratic politics. And so anyway, the council tonight is meeting. It's a busy week. We have the State of the City address on Wednesday by Adrian Feins. It's 6:30, I think, is the reception, and 7:00 is the speech. That's a big event as well, and we have an interesting meeting tonight. We have no broadcast next Monday night because of the city conference, and then we're back the following week. But tonight, the council heard the semi-annual update on capital improvement program projects, and probably the biggest thing was the police and fire building, and both the police chief, who thanked them from the bottom of his heart, and the fire chief, very, very happy with, Fire Chief describing getting the rigs in and out, that he just loves his station, that he says, one thing that he was saying is, it's a big, common thing for these fire rigs to, they have tough time getting in and out. There's not going to be any problem getting in and out, and that's a great thing for the firefighters and for, they are, they are to full capacity as far as employment. Palo Alto Fire, always an exciting place to be, to have a career, one of the top places if you want to be a fireman, but it was the chief who mentioned tonight that this new facility is going to be a great recruiting tool for, to get great people in the police department, and this was after his impressive presentation last week, and a great video where they showed various police of Palo Alto, one, a woman who used to be a college softball player, great player, a man who was a great Stanford football player, a engineer, a man who used to be an engineer, now he's, all of them are now police officers, a nurse, former nurse, now a police officer, the great backgrounds that these people have, and what a diverse and interesting force that goes into police. And with this new facility, it's going to be a great recruitment tool when they tour the facility to get and to hire new police people. And it's a, there's a great brochure they put out about being a police officer in Palo Alto. So it was the great location of the facility, of the public service building. There is an open house on Saturday, March 21st, at 12:00 noon. You can check it out, and that's going to be a great thing, and check out the great open house and this great, great building. And it was Councilmember McCormack who remembered when they were struggling to get it, and it didn't quite, they thought they had it, but it didn't pass certain codes, and it was such a disappointment, but they hung in there and they got that finished. Also extending the bicycle and electrical scooter share pilot program is on tonight by one year, and a review report on the Palo Alto History Museum fundraising, and they've been having some trouble fundraising, which is too bad, so that's on tonight's docket as well. This is from the Palo Alto Daily News by Sarah Taban. Palo Alto might start searching for a new user for the Roth Building at 300 Homer Avenue after an audit found that the Palo Alto History Museum has failed again to raise enough money to rehabilitate the building. The Roth Building was bought by the city in 2002. It's PHM, wants to lease the building for a history museum, but the group has made slow progress over the past decade in raising enough fundraising to begin the construction. They were supposed to have raised 3.15 million for construction. The fundraising was audited. Over the past year, the city has been auditing their fundraising efforts with the help from the auditing firm Mashes, Ginny &amp; O'Connell, which had an office in Walnut Creek. The results of the audit are in the memo from the city manager, Ed Chikata, for the council's meeting tonight. The city plans that the PHMM got 4.8 million in donations and 2.9 million in pledges since 2000. However, the Palo Alto History Museum also spent 3.6 million. The city also has determined that 2 million of the pledges are restricted in use and can't be used for general construction, while 200,000 of the pledges aren't likely to be collected. The museum has only 1 million in cash on hand. Construction was supposed to cost 9.2 million, but the city says current estimates are over 10 million. That means that the project is short several millions, even if the city's promised contribution of 5.2 million goes through. The memo says the passage of the decade has been bad for the increasing degraded building and the morale of stakeholders. Alternatives are considered. The city might open up a new request for proposals. Alternatives are considered, the city might open up a new request for proposals to see who else wants to use the building. The city could also go ahead and start trying to stabilize the building. Another option would be to move the Palo Alto History Museum share space with another group, so they would share it with someone. And the Palo Alto History Museum website said they have exceeded the city's fundraised goal by raising 1.8 million in a year. The push for the museum is being led by a collection of Palo Alto organizations, including the Palo Alto Historical Association, the University South Neighborhood Association, the Palo Alto to Stanford Heritage and Museum of the American Heritage. So that'll be interesting about that tonight. And history is such a big part of any community and where that goes. There's a council finance committee meeting this week. The committee plans to review the preliminary plan for the junior museum and zoo, and hear about the preliminary rate changes proposed for the electric, gas and water and wastewater utilities in the fiscal year 2021. The meeting begins at 7:00 PM tomorrow night, Tuesday, March 30, in the community meeting room at City Hall at 250 Hamilton Avenue. The State of the City is this Wednesday.
We have two action items tonight. Our first is the adoption of resolution to extend the bike and electric scooter share pilot program for one year. And after that, we have the Palo Alto History Museum's fundraising status. So let's do item five. Director Kamhee, welcome.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we are here to seek approval of an extension for the bicycle and electric scooter share pilot program to allow for adequate time to evaluate the pilot program and to collect the city council's comments on our draft guidelines. And we have the real, this is the very, very high-level background slide. This is 30,000 feet for sure, because not only does Palo Alto have much more background on bike-scooter share in 2016, the city was nearly ready to spend a million dollars to have bicycles brought here by the formerly known as SOBI, or social bicycles, which is now known as JUMP. But we have a pilot program that was approved and frankly, sat on, and then again, approved a year ago, and implementation was then delayed due to staff resources and frankly, once I came aboard, due to the impending expiration date. So the other part of the background that's, that's really critical in this discussion is that the landscape for bicycle and scooter share has changed quite drastically. And the good news is that's allowed us to learn from our peers and to capture a lot of the lessons learned in this process, and also to monitor the fact that bicycle share is kind of slowly going away as the vendors are really switching more primarily to scooter share. So again, I want to note that although the programs had previously, as a pilot, been approved by council, staffs made adjustments to the program based on the rapidly changing micro-mobility landscape and lessons learned. And prior pilot programs included a requirement that less than 50% of the devices be placed in the downtown and California Avenue business districts. Whereas for this process, staff recommends requesting that permitees propose incentivized parking areas for key destinations, which we have provided examples of. And through this revision, we're seeking to have vendors indicate where usage will actually be sustainable in order to have high enough per-device usage. Staff has also removed the prior cap of devices, and instead will be seeking a justification from the vendors for proposed fleet size. And a community engagement plan must be submitted and approved by city staff. The outreach process must be completed prior to the deployment of any devices. And the guidelines will allow for the city to charge a per-device fee for removal and storage of devices that are not properly parked. And should a company become insolvent or disappear, as has happened in some of that prior history, the guidelines that we're setting up will include a performance bond that would cover a per-device fee. So I mentioned that currently, you know, bike share is sort of a dying part of this bike and scooter share, micro-mobility process. And thus, we are incentivizing companies that would provide both bike and scooter. And so we're hoping to obtain both of those so that we can really fully test those in this pilot program. And second, the guidelines are seeking providers that will ensure affordable rates for low-income users. And just to briefly go over the program regulations and requirements, we're asking permitees to provide notice about helmet usage and age restrictions. And that would most likely be on the mobile devices or apps, or when somebody's registering for the program. And permitees must propose geo-fenced areas that would designate either areas that the devices cannot be taken, or to designate incentivized parking areas. And permitees are also required to provide a direct contact for responding to rebalancing and removing devices. And finally, I'm gonna get into our timeline, which is probably a little bit overly ambitious. We said we would do program announcement within 10 days after council adoption, but frankly, we'll probably need a little bit more time to revise the guidelines, somewhat dependent on your input tonight. But I do believe we'll need a little bit more time. But following that announcement, and actually, I want to say, I want it to be ambitious, I do want to do it quickly. So I hope that it's not too far longer than that. But we'd like to do the, have the application deadline be three weeks following that, the application review four weeks following that, and then permit issuance one week. And that's inclusive of the community outreach prior to deployment. And then deployment four weeks after permit issuance, following that community outreach program. And then program review would be six to nine months after the initiation. And, you know, really, what we want to do is bring you, council, for your review of the pilot program somewhere around maybe February, possibly even January. And with that, I'd be happy to take in your questions. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Terrible, I skipped right into the presentation, I didn't introduce staff. Sorry, I'm just really eager to get this done, but this is Sylvia Starlack, Sylvia Starlack, our transportation planning manager. And I want to also introduce Joanna Chan, who's a new staff, actually represents one of the new Office of Transportation staff. She actually started when I did, however, and she's our senior transportation planner. And she's the one that worked to get this program up and running again.
Welcome, and thank you very much. Let's go to council very quickly, are there any clarifying questions? Okay, let's go to the public then, we have two speakers, Sam, three speakers, Sam Kang, Adina Levin, and Ken Kirschner. Mr. Kang, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Mayor, I just want to just first introduce myself. My name is Sam Kang, Director of Government Relations for Lime. By every metric and measure, we are the largest micro-mobility company in the world. We operate in more than 120 cities across the globe, 30-plus countries, and in five continents. We're headquartered right here in the Bay Area, so this is home. And this being Silicon Valley, outside of San Jose, the Valley has been conspicuously absent of this wave taking hold in terms of multimodal transportation and micro-mobility. And we want to be the first-mile, last-mile solution here in Palo Alto when it's raised. So I'm here to speak on behalf of support of this action item here tonight. I just want to highlight some of the benefits we can bring to the city, as well as the region, in terms of what other cities have seen. In Oakland, we have over 2.5 million rides that have, people have taken over the course of two years in Oakland and operating there. And of those 2.5 million rides, 80% of those rides on our Lime scooters have been to and from transit, 80%. In San Jose, we've had about 2 million rides over our permitting, permitting duration there. And our riders, when we surveyed them, said that about a third of those trips have displaced a car, either driving their own car or hailing an Uber or Lyft. That's 700,000 car trips that we save on San Jose city streets. And around the world, we saved about 25 million car rides, million miles that otherwise would have happened. So that equates to about 9,000 metric tons of carbon emissions saved. But at the end of the day, we are a very hyper-local company. We want to cater to what the needs of the cities are. Fortunately, the Bay Area has a lot of progressive values in terms of not just presenting a multimodal way of transportation, but also, we care about environment. So we're eager to bring our clean and green multimodal transportation here to Palo Alto. So I would urge your support to actualize the very ambitious plan that city staff has laid out tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Adina Levin. Welcome.
Good evening, city council members and staff. Adina Levin, I am Executive Director of Friends of Caltrain, which focuses not only on successful modernization and stable funding for Caltrain, but doing so in the context of a regionally-integrated network of sustainable transportation, including first- and last-mile solutions like e-scooters. And will also share that I'm on the policy committee for the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, and I do not represent the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, but I will comment that they do support micro-mobility, such as scooters, as a general rule. So in terms of the decision that is before you today, that was really interesting to hear the stats from Lime in terms of the share of trips that were displacing the car. Santa Monica's study of their successful e-scooter deployment showed that 49% of their trips are displacing a car. So, you know, as there are new options for people to get around and take those short trips without a car that has potential benefit, before the bike share was pulled from Mountain View, they saw that their bike share service were used for trips between a half a mile and a mile largely around, you know, to and from transit center and downtown. One of the things about Palo Alto moving, potentially moving forward, is that Mountain View was planning to work with Palo Alto in their city council priority setting. They just delayed their adoption until later in the year, not because they didn't want to do it, but because they were short-staffed. But they would be following right behind with a program that was, that they refined back last year. And then Sunnyvale is looking to follow Mountain View. So if Palo Alto goes ahead and, and has a successful experience, there are other cities that are waiting in the wings to provide this option to more people. Caltrain is also doing a study of first- and last-mile options. So there's potential support from the backbone transit service. You're gonna hear from Ken Kirschner in a moment, who's gonna talk about some features that you may be wanting to include in the pilot program. And his experience, I would urge you to listen to him, but I would also urge you to go ahead and, and move forward advancing a pilot program so we can see if this type of mobility that, for people to take short trips without a car and do first mile, last mile to transit can work in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this item will be Ken Kirschner. Welcome.
Good evening, council, thanks for having this topic on the agenda tonight. I've been a student of scooter programs in many other cities such as Portland, Austin, Atlanta, Oakland, San Jose, and there are over 100 cities that have scooter programs in the U.S. today. I'm also an advocate at Silicon Valley Bike Coalition, and specifically, an advocate for a Safe Routes to Work program specifically targeting commuter mode shift. And you'll understand why that's important. But I do want to comment on and encourage the mid-peninsula cities to continue to work together, as Ms. Levine suggested, that Menlo Park, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Palo Alto should all be collaborating to work on better bikeways and infrastructure as a set of connected routes. So one suggestion for the new policy would be to make sure that scooter parking is not permitted in bike lanes. So it's currently recommended in the furniture zone, I support that. I also want to observe that the unit economics are often not positive, especially in less dense city arrangements like the mid-peninsula. VC-funded companies are predicated on top-line revenue growth and the expectation of some consolidation and the ability to raise prices later. They make money when these systems are ridden more than five times per day. And it's important to amortize the city fees to align with that per-ride business model. And I just note that it's ironic that adapting, adopting a scooter-sharing program policy now, as this industry has entered the hype cycle, trough of disillusionment is kind of evidenced by the pullback in 14 cities by Lime. I think that's ultimately a healthy thing, we'll end up with a more sustainable program. Best case is to replace car trips is to attach to transit. Caltrain and Samtrans, first mile, last mile, this is an opportunity for heightened collaboration where the city could offer a revenue share with charging corrals and docking stations. The city should insist on rules for rider incentives to park scooters responsibly and restrict membership and revoke membership for failure to park them responsibly. Rebalancing should be concentrated at stations and bus stops in the morning and employment centers in the afternoon. And public education on how to report, on how to declutter the streets should be included. Rebalancing cargo vehicles, how to move these scooters around should be carbon-free by e-bike trailers or the equivalent. And some surprising findings in other cities, scooters are abandoned in parking garages where GPS does not work. This is indicating that riders are using it for the last quarter mile, replacing a walking trip, and that should be discouraged. Impoundment fees are an opportunity to cover city costs, they can be between $200 and $400.
If you could please just wrap up your-
Yep, and my last suggestion is to require helmets. Safety's a huge issue. Incentives and penalties and that revocation for not wearing helmets should be considered a friction point that the scooter companies will resist. I have several other suggestions, but I'll conclude there.
Thank you, sir. So we now return to council, and the first light I have is from Councilmember Tanaka.
So I am really glad that this is finally here. It's been a long, long time. But I guess the advantage is that we probably learned from other cities and what worked and what doesn't work. So anyways, I, I had an early morning meeting in San Jose, and I took my scooter, actually it was my son's scooter, because my skateboard was broken, took my son's electric scooter to the Caltrain station, Calaf Caltrain station, rode the Caltrain down to Dineron, and then rode my scooter for about a mile and a half. And the great thing on the way back is that there was no traffic, because it's the train. So it was really nice. So I do think that with this being a city priority, and this being one of the top, traffic congestion being one of the top issues for our residents, I think this is a good step in trying to solve it. So I, I think this is headed in the right direction. You know, just as others know, I was, about a month ago, I was in Paris. And in Paris, they have these all over the place, and it was the way to get around. I mean, everyone was riding it. And it was faster than the cab, certainly faster than the subway. I mean, it's also a lot of fun. So I think, I think it makes a lot of sense. But I think in order for this to really work, I think it's important that more cities have it, because, for instance, because Palo Alto, we don't have a scooter share or a bike share. If you're in San Francisco and you're coming down to Palo Alto, and we're the second busiest stop, like, what do you do? You have no choice but to carry your own, which is what I do. But, but if you wanted to make an impact on some of the traffic congestion, we have to be part of the program, especially Palo Alto, as being the second busiest stop. So, so anyways, I fully support this. So I just want to make the motion to, for staff's recommendation, to adopt a resolution to approving a one-year extension of the bicycle and electric scooter pilot program. to approving a one-year extension of the bicycle and electric scooter pilot program through March 31, 2021. Okay, great.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Tanaka, seconded by myself. Do you care to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I kind of did, but I do have a few amendments, but I just want to get this out on the table first. So I guess my, you know, there's four things which I thought we should think about, and I'd like to ask Staff about this. So I guess for me, this is a one-year pilot, you know, this is for us to learn. And, you know, I saw some of the requirements in there that seemed to make it kind of a tough program to get going. And so I do question about whether we have to do it for the pilot, and maybe we could do it later on when it goes, you know, goes into production. So one of them is, the Speaker mentioned, which I think actually does make sense, we should probably have it in here, is not to permit parking of scooters in the bike lane. But is that not already covered? But if not, maybe we should make it as part of this amendment.
I'm not sure that that's necessary because the guidelines will indicate that they must park them legally, and we're specifying where, and a bike lane would not be one of the locations.
Okay.
But just note that the guidelines are not, we hadn't intended on having the guidelines adopted tonight, they're draft guidelines. So we could certainly, I believe, there would be not a problem to include that language in there. We certainly do not want scooters parked in any bike lanes.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be dangerous. And I think I don't want to add redundancy because it sounds like it's already covered, so let's keep it simple. The other three, one was a valid driver's license. Now, first of all, a lot of the youth ride electric scooters, including my kids, and they don't have a driver's license. And a lot of millennials are not, you know, flock into cars, a lot of millennials don't even have driver's license. So I guess I found it a little bit extreme to require driver's license to ride an electric scooter, where you see a bunch of people that don't have driver's license riding scooters. And so it just seems like, why, why do we have the requirement?
So, yeah, that's an interesting point. But I will say, and I think we could almost probably call up the gentleman from Lime that's here, but it seems from Staff's research that all of the current companies that provide these scooter devices do require driver's licenses for their program.
It's a requirement of state law.
I see. Okay. Well, if it's state law, then it is.
Thank you.
State law, okay. And then the other two that kind of made me wonder, one was the Clipper Card. So I don't know, you know, a lot of these companies are kind of starting out, and doing the Clipper Card integration is really hard. I mean, there's, heck, there's even, you know, agencies here that have been around for decades and haven't got Clipper Card integration. So to me, it just seems like a really tall order to get Clipper Card integration when, you know, government agencies that have been around for decades haven't been able to do it. So I guess it just seems bizarre to require that. Not that I don't want it, but I'm just saying it seems like a really hard thing to do.
I might be misunderstanding, but I don't believe it was Staff's intention to require a Clipper Card, and it's highly unlikely that we would get...
But it says it on the page, on page... I mean, I might have misread it, but it, let's see.
Yes, so I believe that's under innovative options, but I just want to reiterate, I think it's highly unlikely that any of these companies would be able to get an authorization from the Clipper Program or MTC to do that. But that, if they were to, it's more likely going to happen as a Bay Area regional-type thing. That would be an option.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess I...
Not a requirement.
Not, okay. So it says on 10, it says, "Permittee shall provide an option to use Clipper Card." It says, like, "shall provide," not like you're, it's optional to provide, it's like "shall provide." So the way I read that means you must provide, which to me seems kind of like a super-hard thing to do.
Yeah, we will definitely clarify that.
Okay. So I want to make...
Thank you.
If the Secretary will accept that we make this an optional requirement versus a hard requirement, because it's virtually impossible for them to do this.
I think Staff just said that they will clarify it, so it's optional. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was the intended language. So, yeah, so again, we're not seeking for adoption of these guidelines. These are still draft, and they will still have edits, but I very much appreciate any input that we could receive tonight.
Okay. I think the other thing that, to me, struck me as a really hard requirement is the low-wage requirement. I mean, these are like a dollar per ride. It's one of the most affordable things out there. And so to me, like, how does someone validate that it's low income? I mean, it just seems like a really hard, especially for a one-year pilot. And when it's already, like, heck, a lot cheaper than buying a bike, or taking an Uber, or taking a taxi, it just seems like a really, like, it's a pilot, it's a one-year pilot. We're trying to get started. I mean, why make it so difficult to get rolling? So to me, it also seems like the Clipper Card and the low-wage requirement, it just seems like a super-hard thing to administrate and make happen, especially for a one-year pilot. And so I don't know why we want to make people jump through hoops. So that's the other thing that I would, I would not support in this. So I don't know if the Secretary would support that.
Does Staff have a response there on the low-wage requirement?
Well, frankly, this is something that was part of the legacy from this pilot adoption, and the two prior adoptions also included this. It is something that may not be cost prohibitive to you and I, but could be to somebody that needs to use this on a daily basis or, you know, countries.
It just seems like a hard startup cost, right? It's like, how do you, how do you do this, right? How do you verify low income? And it's $1. I mean, how cheap is it going to be, a penny? I mean, I mean, I think it just seems, it just seems like for pilot, where we're just trying to explore if this idea works or not, it just seems like it makes it hard to get rolling.
So I'm pretty sure I've seen this in other programs. I'm just wondering, maybe we should ask Mr. Kang of Lime if there's any...
If I may.
Thank you, sir.
Very much appreciate the question, Councilmember Tanaka. Lime actually provides a very robust low-income program in virtually all the cities that we operate in. Either, it could be as robust as 50% off the unlock fee as well as the per-minute fee. Some cities, we offer actually free rides five times a day, up to 30 minutes at a time. However, you're right, in terms of there are numerous costs that make it really tough to just get that program going. So what we'd like to do is offer expansive, expansive low-income program as possible. In exchange, what we'd like to do is negotiate as reasonable, as low as fees as possible, required from the city, per vehicle, per trip as possible. That actually allows us to help supplement accessibility through low-income programs.
So for me, it's, Lime is one of the largest providers out there. There's a lot of other ones that aren't that large that have this kind of, like, ability to actually verify low income. And a lot of these companies are, as one of the Speaker mentioned, are barely profitable. I mean, they're already kind of like, kind of marginal. So, I mean, my suggestion is for the pilot, where we're trying to learn whether this works or not, that we, we look at this later, just so we could get some data as what works and doesn't work, versus trying to, like, solve a world peace at this point in time.
I think I'm in line with your argument in that I would rather just get this program out there and see what happens. So, I mean, I guess I would accept that. I would just encourage Staff, if there's like a trade-off there, like, maybe if a company offers a low-income program or a low-wage program, there's some benefit to them, whatever Staff can come up with.
So can, can you put that in the motion then, please? So get rid of the low-wage requirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. Just speaking to my second, thank you, Staff, for bringing this forward. This is one item I've been frustrated on for a while, and when I talk to people from out of town, they're like, "When's Palo Alto going to get scooters?" I don't think this is a panacea that will solve all or even a large share of our mobility and transportation and traffic problems in Palo Alto. But it's one small strategy and one small slice of the pie. And as many of us have been to other cities around the country and world, you definitely see these things working. At the same time, they certainly have some effects that I can understand Palo Alto residents may be apprehensive of, such as, you know, potential injuries or cluttering on roads. And I think Staff has done a good job of weaving a needle there. I'll just remind folks, like, let's, we shouldn't be too afraid of programs like this. You know, we currently have multi-thousand-pound, you know, vehicles operating on our roads every single day. And so I think we need to keep that in perspective, that these are small, lightweight devices, and they provide a new opportunity for residents and visitors. Two quick questions. One, why is Staff asking for a two-year requirement or a one-year requirement, not like two years or longer? Is one year enough? Just seeing that we've renewed it before and...
Yeah, so, well, the answer is, we're hoping to get this rolling as quickly as possible. And I think at least six months is really the, you know, minimal amount of data that we'd want to collect. So I think that the six-to-nine-month data collection period is sufficient to kind of evaluate. And the reality is, we might want to shift gears after that one-year period. We might have some serious reactions that we want to address. So I think that having that carry on for another year might be a little bit difficult.
Okay. Totally understood. And then the other question is, in the incentivized parking areas for, a lot of these make sense, downtown California Avenue, the Caltrain Station, the shopping center, Town and Country. The one that stood out a little bit to me was Palo Alto Libraries. I'm just wondering if you can tell me the rationale that, you know, all five of our libraries should have a incentivized parking area?
So just generally, actually, we're going to be making a little bit of edits to this section because really what we wanted to give is examples of key destinations that we would like to have incentivized. And these are not necessarily the destinations that must be incentivized, and they're not necessarily the only destinations that we'd want incentivized. We really want proposers and, you know, those that are, I should say, permitees, to give us an application and provide justification for why they think a certain area is going to be a sustainable place to place a device.
Okay. Totally fair. Thank you. That's helpful. I think those are all my comments. I hope we can pass this and ideally get some scooters and e-bikes out there on the streets and see how they work and refine the program as needed. Next, I think Vice Mayor DuBois had some comments, and then Councilmember Cormac.
Yeah, I support extending the pilot program. I do think it's critical we learn from the pilot, get all the information we need. I have a question. The staff report mentions the maximum number of devices. Does Staff have an initial maximum amount in mind?
So I think this comes back to the justification. We've really asked for the permitees to, in their proposals, to provide a justification for the amount of devices that they are proposing. That said, we found that cities similar in size to Palo Alto have probably around 500 Previously, the pilot, I believe, was 700 devices is what was approved. So we're somewhat flexible if we feel that the proposals are making a reasonable justification. Because like I said earlier, I think what's more critical is that they have a per-device usage so that the company's actually making money off those devices so that they don't just disappear the next day.
So I do think we should have a max, and I think we should ensure that, like, no one company takes that whole allocation. I want to say I'm particularly happy to see the details in the data agreement. I think data sharing is a critical factor for me. As you read the ordinance in the report, we're talking about encroachment permits, enabling private companies to encroach on public right-of-way. And so I think it is important that we have ways to recover if that, if that rights abused in some way. One thing I'd like to point out or ask about is, I think during the pilot period, we should evaluate potential opportunities for the city in the longer-term program to either generate potential revenue or other benefits. I'd be interested in learning about how we can potentially price encroachment permits or share in some of the revenue or be able to utilize the data ongoing. So again, I support this. I am hopeful this is the third year we'll have this pilot, so hopefully somebody will take us up on it. And again, I just, I just hope Staff will take a look at really understanding kind of longer-term revenue opportunities for the city.
Is that all, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As someone who is not a transportation nerd, I guess I'll use my last word, because some people here, which is awesome, I think with all the details, perhaps there are a few things, if we could just go up a little bit high level, members of the community. So I wonder what the problem is we are trying to solve. There's a lot of technical information in here. Is fundamentally the problem we're trying to solve people who come here and get on via Caltrain and need to get to work? Is it more complicated than that?
So I'd almost pass this back to the member of the public who's come here to represent Lime to help present that case. But transportation, from a transportation perspective and micro-mobility, a lot of what micro-mobility is being used for is for that first-last-mile. That's really a key usage. But it could also provide, you know, options for somebody to make a shorter trip that they would normally make by their car, instead by a scooter. As Councilmember Tanaka mentioned earlier, it can be kind of fun. I actually ride these quite frequently in San Francisco. And it's a way of not getting in an Uber or a rideshare or driving a car to make kind of a short trip between maybe transit. In San Francisco, I, for instance, take it between BART and Caltrain quite often.
Okay. So specifically for people who are commuting? And what's the average length of a ride?
That is one of the reasons why we want to collect the data.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're really interested in finding out how rides are taken, what they're taken for, and where people are going.
So we're not sure yet? Okay. And the cost per ride, Councilmember Tanaka said a dollar. Is that like about the average cost?
So I believe most of the rides are priced with an activation fee, so when you turn on the scooter, and then it's either per mile or per time.
Okay. What is an incentivized parking area? It sounds a little bit like a high occupancy vehicle, and we mean carpool, so...
Right. So one of the challenges that has occurred with scooter programs in several cities is that you find what has been termed as scooter litter, which is scooters that you find kind of strewn everywhere. And so frankly, what the incentivized parking program within this pilot is intended to do is to tell people, "Hey, you'll save a few dollars on your ride if you park it here," which is one of the areas we really feel is a safe and healthy spot to park a scooter. And so it's incentivizing that, and at the same time, it's the carrot and the stick. So it's also disincentivizing bad parking behavior.
So we're going to tell the company that they have to provide a discount for people if they're parking that way, in that place?
Or provide some sort of incentive, yes.
Okay. Like a cookie or what? One of the things that I've heard people talk about is not all the scooters operate in the same manner. And there can be some, people are confused, or they're not sure how the brakes work on different ones. Is there any safety concerns about that that you've thought about? I haven't tried all the scooters from the various vendors.
Yeah, I've tried a few of them. I find them pretty similar. But that said, when you sign up and you have, you can't just use them, just walk up to them, you need to sign up, you need to go through their process. They have an educational component, and we are requiring that, and as well as outreach. But the educational component will walk you through, or should walk you through, some kind of basic understanding of how to utilize the device.
Okay, it's like video or something? Okay. And so we heard about the large cities who have implemented scooter programs. What do you think is stopping the smaller cities? Why, why is it taking all of us a little bit longer?
Well, it's not all small cities that are lagging. It just seems to be our neighbors. And actually, I thought we were going to be the second city. I thought we'd be following Mountain View. We're talking to them about that. But I believe that we've hired their staff that was working on the program, so that might be why they had some issues.
Okay.
So that said, now, now this, other cities are going to be watching us to learn from this program.
Okay. And are we, do you, what leads us to believe that this pilot will be successful where the prior two hadn't? And by successful, I mean someone will actually want to do it, right? What are the things you've changed in this that leads you to believe that someone might actually decide to apply?
So I actually think that we have no hesitation in companies that are interested in applying. We've actually been, you know, you've heard one company tonight, we've been contacted by other companies, we will definitely have people applying.
Because we changed what?
It's not really, I don't, I don't think it's because we've necessarily changed something to get them. I think probably they were very interested in applying previously. We just hadn't, you know, finalized the guidelines and released the actual... know, finalized the guidelines and released the actual process to do so.
Okay, so it's about the guidelines. We got an interesting email about baskets, okay? So I guess that's sort of, you know, even if you're commuting, you might have a backpack or something with your laptop or what have you. Do these have baskets? Is that something we think would make them more or less useful?
It's not something that I've seen so far on the scooters, however, I have seen that on the bikes, which we are hoping we will get some.
Okay.
Typically, the bikes do have baskets.
And then what about 15 mile-per-hour enforcement? Having seen one of these shoot down the Ross Road Bicycle Boulevard, I'm pretty sure it was going faster than 15 miles an hour.
I believe they are speed-limited per vehicle code.
Really?
I'm not sure if Molly has that information handy.
So they're not allowed to go faster than 15?
Yeah, so they are speed-limited.
Great, we don't need to enforce it.
It might seem like they're going very fast, but I think that speed limit might actually be 15 miles per hour.
So this person also was not wearing a helmet, and that came up. Is that something you've contemplated requiring?
So there's also a provision in state law with regard to helmets. State law was revised to allow, to require that helmets be worn for riders under 18, but the lack of a rule over 18, it actually preempts the city from regulating in that area.
Okay, so hopefully that educational video is like, if you're over 16 and have a driver's license and you're under 18, you can use it and you have to wear a helmet? I'm seeing a Venn diagram. Okay, well, I hope that the community engagement is robust, and I agree with the Vice Mayor that the data sharing will be very useful, the location starts and finishes, the time, et cetera, because frankly, I think we're making some assumptions about who's going to use this and how. So I look forward to supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks, so thank you very much to staff for designing this. You know, I think you guys, and Philip especially, have said this more articulately than I'm about to, but the reality is, we don't completely understand the use model, and we won't until we see some of these things go, right? And I see very little downside in the dual pilot, so...
Thank you. And our final speaker is Councilmember Niss.
Thanks very much for the presentation. But it occurs to me that we have a group in here tonight, it's a fairly good-sized group, and I think we can find out something about scooters. So how many of you, and how many of you in here are familiar with scooters to start with? And how many of you will be riding the scooter more than two or three times a week? Ooh, so, Councilmember Cormac, you probably get a good sense of who's really going to be interested in the scooters. So, and it doesn't appear that it's going to be the group in here tonight. I have family in Santa Monica, I'm really familiar with the scooters. And while that program may have been, maybe it's been called successful, the number of scooters that are scattered, that are left in bushes beside the road, that are just casually tossed aside, especially because that is, that's a community that's right near the water, so people ride them to the beach and so forth. So, I'm not going to vote against this, but I think that we'll discover, in the community, there will be somebody who says, I got hit by a scooter because they were up on the sidewalk, or, you know, kids are scooting to school instead of on their bikes, and that's a whole different pattern. But, as I said, I'm not going to vote against it, but I think there is, there is another side to the scooters, and another side to who will want to, who will want to use the scooters. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Not exactly a fair sample, I'll point out, but comments well taken.
That looked like a great sample.
One more comment? Councilmember Phil Seth.
I hit my light.
No, no.
I actually kind of agree with Councilmember Niss, you know, having been to Santa Monica, you know, they're all over the place, and they're lying on the beach, and on the paths down there, and so forth. That's why I like this as a pilot, right? And I think we should be really clear, right? I mean, if there's, I think you call it scooter trash, right? You know, we should try some of these mechanisms by, you know, you get an incentive to park it where, in certain zones, as opposed to just throwing it on the street or in the creek or something like that, right? But, yeah, scooter trash, in my mind, you know, if it's sufficiently bad, should be a reason to say, okay, that was the pilot, and we're not doing it anymore, and I think people should understand that, right? So, I mean, scooter companies need to, you know, internalize this as part of their business model, if they're going to succeed in municipalities.
Yeah, if I can, I do want to emphasize that I think you are both correct, that there are positives and negatives to this. And I think, you know, we recognize that, you know, we're likely to get phone calls and complaints and concerns about this. We know, in talking with the police chief, that he's concerned that he's going to be getting calls. We know that Public Works is concerned that they're going to have to go pick up these things. So we do recognize there's some challenges. That said, we have learned from Santa Monica's example, we've used them actually as one of the peer resources, because they were actually one of the first, actually, I think, maybe the first city to really go widespread with scooters, and probably had too many scooters and too many vendors, so it became a little bit challenging for them to manage. But that said, this pilot is a little bit restrictive, in that we're trying to influence where the scooters are allowed to be parked. That said, if the pilot, you know, when we review the pilot, we can look at either restricting them even further, so there are options for us to restrict parking further, or, as Councilmember Phil Seth said, we might not look to extend the pilot beyond its pilot phase.
Thank you very much. If you would please vote on the board, and Vice Mayor DuBois, if you would just tell us how you're voting.
Yeah, I'd vote to support.
Thank you. So that passes unanimously with Councilmember Koo absent. Thank you very much, staff. All right, our last item of the night is item number six, a review of the report on the Palo Alto History Museum's fundraising status for the Roth Building Rehabilitation Project at 300 Homer Avenue, and discussions for future options. I believe staff has a presentation, and if you would please, if you would like to speak on this item, please get your cards into the City Clerk, and let's, it's 8:43, let's close taking cards at 9:00 PM, please.
I'm Kylie Nozay, the Administrative Services Director, and I'm here with David Ramberg, our Assistant Director, who's going to walk you through the staff presentation.
Thank you, Kylie, and good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we are here to discuss, discussion of and potential direction for, next steps regarding the Roth Building. And our first slide tonight is really to quickly bring you up to speed a little bit on a little bit of the background and the timeline of the project over the past, well, it's really been a couple of decades now at this point. If we go all the way, I'll hit just a couple of these highlights. If we go all the way back to 2000, that is when the city purchased the Roth Building and approved its historic designation. In 2005, the council granted a 40-year lease option to the Palo Alto History Museum. Fast-forwarding to the 2014-2017 period, there were a number of one-year extensions granted to the Palo Alto History Museum for additional fundraising. And then bringing us up to pretty much the current timeframe, in 2019, the building permit was issued, which was a major milestone in the project. And also in 2019, we initiated a very deep dive into the fundraising, so that we could bring back to the city council here tonight, a clear and accurate status report on the fundraising to date, and that's what we intend to do in the next few slides, and what's included in your packet tonight. So that fundraising review was conducted by the city's external financial auditor. They were the only firm that responded to our solicitation. They also do work in this area, so it was a good match. Their report is included in the staff report tonight. Their report concludes that Palo Alto History Museum has raised somewhere in the neighborhood of 7.7 million in total donations and pledges. Just as a reminder, donations is money actually brought in and held, pledges are future dollars that are coming in. On the donations piece, donations, the report says that donations were generated in the range of $4.8 million since 2000. This is inclusive of the city council's goal of 1.75 million that was set in 2017. On the pledges side, there's 2.9 million in pledges that was raised by the Palo Alto History Museum. This includes a $2 million pledge that is reserved specifically for Phase Two of the project, so this does not get applied to the Phase One capital campaign for the construction of the building. What MGO did then, in their report, and they outlined this, is look at the collectability of the remaining pledges. And collectability, they applied risk factors such as the age of the pledge, the amount owed, the history of the donor, and documentation status of the pledge, whether the pledge is in written form or verbal form. And they determined that there are likely collectible pledges of the remaining pledges of around 242,000 to 583,000, based on their review. The next category here that MGO looked into is the operating expenses. It's also worth noting that this was not a formal financial audit, so they did not look at every single financial transaction, and they did not produce a auditor's opinion as a financial audit would. But they did look at expenditures and revenues over time, and they determined that the Palo Alto History Museum since 2000 has spent somewhere in the neighborhood of 3.6 million in operating expenses. So what that has resulted in is that the Palo Alto History Museum has about 1.9 million in cash on hand as of November 2019. So it might be slightly different today, but that's the balance as of the MGO report. This slide does not include the 5.2 million in government funds that have been contributed to the project via city council action over time. You will see that on an upcoming slide. To walk through the, to walk through the Palo Alto History Museum available cash balance once more in a table format, you have the 4.3, you have $4.3 million in revenue that MGO cites in their report. There are other sources which were not determined, and then there were operating expenses since 2005, which I mentioned earlier, of 3.6 million, resulting in the $1 million balance of cash on hand as of November 2019. And that's cash that would be available for the capital investment, as well as operating expenses on a day-to-day basis. The next slide that we'd like to go over here tonight is a financial summary of Phase One construction, and a reminder that Phase One is the general construction and rehabilitation of the facility, to prepare it as a warm shell, so to speak, to allow for the building to be habitable and occupied, and prepare it for Phase Two, which is the build-out of the museum itself. The project cost column has the $9.2 million figure for the building project total rehabilitation cost. That figure is a 2016 figure, provided by Vance Brown at that time. We do not have a new official project cost estimate, but we have had conversations with Vance Brown that strongly indicate that this figure is now upwards of 10-plus million dollars if we were to renew that figure today. The next column is the funding sources column, that we want to walk through here really quick. And the line item of 5.2 million, it represents the city's contribution to date, which is transfer of development right sales that have been contributed to the project, a contribution from the Budget Stabilization Reserve, interest earnings, and a designation from the Library Impact Fees for the city archives to be housed in the building. Palo Alto History Museum has cash on hand, as previously mentioned, of $1 million, and then there's pledges in that range that you see previously of somewhere in the neighborhood of 242,000 to 583,000 that we can expect to be collected for this Phase One of the project. All of that results in a Phase One capital shortage of 2.4 to 2.9 million. There have been a couple, some expenses by Palo Alto History Museum to date to the tune of 57,000, according to the MGO report, and there is a county grant that's awaiting usage, and that's for the reconstruction of the Roth Building roof, and that grant has been awarded and is available for the project. The next slide, Slide Five, is really getting probably to the meat of tonight's discussion, which is to, given the funding gap, talk with the city council about some concepts, some ideas that are purely laid out for discussion purposes. This is really a very short list, but a list that can be, that can spur further discussion, could also be picked from and combined, different elements, these aren't mutually exclusive options here. First on the list is the Request for Proposal. This was most recently considered being brought back on the table in 2017 by the city council. Should there not be a fundraising amount reached, the RFP was being considered as a possible option at that time. The last RFP, if you recall, was in 2005. The Palo Alto History Museum was the only respondent at the time, and they were awarded the RFP. The, a notation for the RFP process, or really for any of these processes, is the consideration of zoning. The zoning for the Roth Building is currently PF, or Public Facility. There could be alternative zonings or conditional use permits that could be considered, either through an RFP process, if there were providers out there that had different ideas that they might want to put forward. Just really touching on that at a very high level this evening, but if there was additional discussion from city council to explore the zoning piece, we would come back with those details. The next option is to stabilize the Roth Building. This option has come up as a result of conversations with Vance Brown and the Palo Alto History Museum. The Palo Alto History Museum has indicated that if there was an initiation of the project in some form or fashion, that there would be a generation and a motivation of additional donations, once the project would be started. So that's one comment associated with this, with this idea. Vance Brown has indicated that a stabilization of the building could be done with an estimated price tag of something around 8.5 million. That would, when we say stabilize the building, it would address the water intrusion that's occurring, that's currently temporarily mitigated through dehumidifiers and things of that nature, but it would permanently address that situation. There's also a temporary back wall that's along the spine of the building that's facing the housing, that was put up originally as a temporary wall, and that would be addressed in this stabilization option. As a reminder, under this option, although the price tag's 8.5 million, there's only about 6.1 million potentially available currently between the government funds and the cash on hand from the Palo Alto History Museum. The final option that we're presenting here tonight is the co-locating, sharing of facility, and this is one that could be discussed further. We would bring back more details if this discussion, if this item were to seek additional comment. One area is to possibly look at tenants to cohabitate the space with. Also, the city could potentially be a tenant, that's part of this concept. None of these have been fleshed out with any certainty at this point in time, so we really want to lay out it as a discussion topic. And this would be really to share the facility. We say in the staff report that the Palo Alto History Museum needs something to, at least half the building, and possibly one half of the first floor, and then the second piece could be potentially available for co-tenants, or some mix along those lines. So that's our final option. So that's our final option that we wanted to lay out and that we have in the staff report. And that brings us to the recommendation, recommended actions that we're presenting for you tonight, again, to review the status of the fundraising to date, provide any comments and additional ideas for exploration around next steps. There's a couple follow-on actions that we're asking the city council to accomplish tonight, and they stem from the 2018 conversation, and that's to allocate $65,000 from the council contingency to environmental volunteers, and there's an email in your staff report that speaks to that item, and there was a council action on it in 2018. And then item number three would be the use agreement attached to those funds for the environmental volunteers. And with that, we're available to take any questions you may have, and we also do have representatives from the Palo Alto History Museum, of course, in the audience, and available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's quickly, if you're willing, Laura, do you want to quickly say a few words, and then we'll go to members of the public?
Certainly. And if I could just offer a few comments, the 8.5 million price tag from Vance Brown assumes that you're still working with the museum. That's the contract that we engaged in. I'm not sure what the price would be if you had to start fresh. First, we want to thank you for your continued support. We know this project has gone on for a long time. We'd like to be in the museum business, not in the construction business, and it feels like we've been in the construction business, which, of course, is a nice, stable industry with no price fluctuation, right? No, the prices are moving faster than we can keep up with. But in essence, I did a cover letter, which is in the back part of the packet here. We thank you for the Sea Scout funding. We added seven dynamic new board members, so we're really looking at our leadership and how they're taking the organization forward more quickly. We've got our building permit pulled, and we're keeping that active, and we've updated our fundraising materials and approach, and we have a great corporate program. But one of the things that we're running into time after time is that the lack of a construction date means that we can't enter into an arrangement or an agreement with certain entities. The corporate marketing departments want to know when they can have that party in the beautiful new exhibit hall, and without a start date, we can't move on that. It's also an obstacle with potential nonprofit partners who've wanted to talk with us about sharing space, but again, they can't hold their students out of school for three years until we get the building built, so things like that have become things that we've run into. But in the end, we really appreciate the support that you have brought to the project. We think preserving our culture and heritage is key to a healthy society that really understands and is empathetic with its colleagues, and I'll leave that at this point. If I could add just one comment, though, on expenses. When you see the 3.6 million, 2 million of that, just over 2 million of that, was spent exclusively on things that I would call capital expenses, i.e. if a donation is given and says you can only use it for something that builds that building, over 2 million has been spent just in that. So over 18 years, the remaining 1.6 million divided by 18 years is a pretty economical $89,000 a year or so. I think that's actually pretty impressive. We run with a lot of volunteer energy, and our donors are very excited about this, and they try to help wherever they can. We're trying to run pretty bare bones. Any other questions?
Thank you. I think we'll go to members of the public.
We call on you if anything else comes up.
Thank you very much. So we have three members of the public who wish to speak. You'll each have three minutes. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Rubin-Fine, to be followed by Kimberly Wong. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Rubin-Fine, and thank you for letting me talk with you tonight. For years, I've been following this project, as my mother was involved in getting it off the ground early on. And for years, I've seen what I would call lukewarm support from the city council, despite the nice comments you just heard. It was great to make the Roth Building available for a potential long-term lease, but since then, obviously, the building's deteriorated and hasn't been taken care of. The city wants this small volunteer group with a couple of paid staff to raise the funds to start repairing the building, and they've been working really hard to do that. But there's kind of a catch-22 here that makes no sense. It makes sense to require that a volunteer group raise funds. It's a good incentive. It forces them to broaden their reach and prove their viability. But if they're not viable, ultimately, the building belongs to the city, and as a historic resource, the city would have to repair it and have to restore it and take care of it. Instead, it would make much more sense if the city were to pay to repair and protect the building, which has deteriorated at this point, and let the museum people work on raising money for renovation and turning it into a museum. If you end up with the building, great, it's in good condition. If you don't end up with the building, maybe you negotiate that the museum pays back those initial funds. This has a big impact on donors. Potential donors aren't coming forward partly because they see no physical work happening on this project. And donors like me, who are committed, we put conditions and we make pledges because we're not interested in repairing a city building for the city to use for offices or some other purpose in the future. We want to build a museum. And so if we put our thousands of dollars out now to repair the damage to this building now, and the museum really can't get off the ground, we have no recourse. I just want to say, the Palo Alto supports other special interest museums, the Junior Museum in Zou, the Art Center. All of this is great. It's a wonderful thing about Palo Alto, and I just am baffled why the city council, I've always been baffled, of all people, is not interested more in supporting a project whose goal is to record and celebrate this community, how it came to be where it is, and why we are what we are today. So I encourage you to support the museum enthusiastically going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Wong, to be followed by Karen Holman.
Dear mayor and city council members, my name is Kimberly Wong. My grandfather, Sam Ying Ma, came to Palo Alto in 1900, cooked at the Sanford Dormes and co-owned City Cafe, the first legal Palo Alto Chinese restaurant that was established in 1905. I'm proud to share stories of my grandfather and my mom's humble beginnings here, and in doing so, I have met many others who are interested in their stories and the stories of more notable people who rose to fame right here in Palo Alto. The residents are the heart and the soul of the city. Palo Alto deserves to have a museum that can reflect this and show the world how it has become the center of innovation and creativity. Without the support from other cities, many of our national treasures and sites would not have been saved. It is vital that our city invests in these local efforts and works jointly with the Palo Alto Museum Board to fulfill their dreams of rehabilitating the deteriorating Roth Building. Time is of essence. Please think of how delaying construction of a bike bridge quickly escalated the costs, and that was just a bridge. The uncertainty of whether we can have the full support of the city is deleterious to the fundraising momentum and is making it extremely difficult to garner further support. As people can see the vision becoming concrete, support will grow considerably, and the last of the funding gap will be closed. We urgently need more city backing of the Palo Alto History Museum for this project to be successful. Currently, the city has offered 10% of the 10 million for construction. Just to put into perspective, the Junior Museum, another great access of the city, had 30% of city funding of its 27 million budget, and construction is now underway. So not only are we supporting the history museum, we are also preserving an important historical site and stories of Palo Alto's past, present, and future. Our community should have a local city center to connect, because when they can learn about town's past and feel rooted in the present, they will be eager to engage in its future. In a city where there is heart and soul, we can create a stronger sense of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is former mayor Karen Holman, and then Steve Player.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and former colleagues even. So thank you for having this discussion this evening, and I just want to bring up a few names. Lucille Packard, Jane Stanford, Anna Shaki, Joseph Eichler, and then maybe some names that aren't quite as familiar. Ed Schmidt, Hazel Robertson, Thomas Foo and Chu. All of those people, all of those names and the stories associated with those names have stories, and stories that significantly impact this community, the state, and even in some cases, the world. And where else are those stories going to be told, if not in a Palo Alto History Museum? I would dare say nowhere. Also, I think, I'm a context person, as you know, I'm a context person, so I think it's important to remember that even our libraries, the libraries were not supported in a bond measure that went forward. It took a devoted individual and a new movement to get the bond measure passed that would restore our five libraries, but it was a halting and unsuccessful effort for a good number of years. The Art Center did not poll well in a poll that the city ran to find out what the community support was for restoring that building. Part of it is time, part of it is support, part of it is how it's presented. I would suggest that the city is asking the museum group to hit a home run without a bat. And by that, I mean that there are obstacles in the place of being able to just go out and swing the bat and hit home runs. There are obstacles, and those obstacles are the uncertainty that the city has put forward, especially the last two years, especially the last two years, about, is the city committed to helping and supporting a history museum, helping and supporting the restoration of the Roth Building, or are we looking at putting out an RFP for some other unknown entity in competition with and creating uncertainty for the history museum? It doesn't help with fundraising at all. Suppose, just suppose, that the council were to support the rest of the capital project for the history museum, for the Roth Building. It's a dollar figure that is frequently approved on consistent calendar without even any discussion. And I would suggest that the amount of money the city has actually committed to the building is 1.3 million, the million dollars for the rehabilitation of the back wall, and $300,000 from the library impact fees. The TDR money from the Roth Building, which is almost $3 million, that came at great expense and great effort, and extended effort on the part of the museum folks to get the building eligible for the National Register and get plans approved that would satisfy the Secretary of Standards, such that the TDRs could be sold. That's really not city funding. And as far as the archives, which are now at Coverly, those were at the Rin Canada Library, the now Rin Canada Library. They're going to be at the new history museum, I'll just finish this once, if it's okay. Those are going to be at the new history museum. It would seem to me that it makes sense for the city to, at a minimum, support the restoration of that and rehabilitation of that square footage and make that contribution so that the archives can go in the new museum, which has been planned for many, many years. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Steve Player, and our final speaker will be Sergio Melo. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for a few minutes of speaking. I want to thank staff for a very thorough report and review. It's very helpful, not only to the city, but also to the members of the board of the museum and the people in the museum who've tried so many years to make this work. I remember when it started, I didn't have any gray hair, and have a few since then, but I want to just speak a little bit to what I think the importance of it is. I think that this city is a unique city. We always talk about how unique it is. What is the Palo Alto way? What is the sauce that makes Palo Alto? But nobody has an opportunity to see or understand what it's all really, really about. This museum will provide that. This museum will provide a place for our kids, for our elders, for anybody who's interested in what has been going on in the city. The question is, how are we going to accomplish this? Now, in this room, all these people are still up, the gray hairs, you know, it's just about past our bedtime, but they're all here, who have been supporting this museum. If you'd all raise your hand that are here thinking, we think this is important for us and they want to, you know, be able to see it done in their lifetimes. So it won't be too short, but I wanted to let you know there is a huge number in this city that have been committed on an annual basis, big donors, little donors, and I think that the interest is there with the support of the city. You have been generous to us. I will not deny that you have given a lot of time, effort, and money into this project. I hope that we can continue to cooperate as we reach this stage, whether it's a new RFP, whether it's a shared tenancy, whether it's this idea of going through and stabilizing the building first. I hope that you and the Palo Alto Museum Board and staff can be working together to solve and reach a solution that works for both sides. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you. I believe in the museum. I think it's going to be a real asset to this city, and I know it's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker is Sergio Melo.
Honorable mayor, vice mayor, council members, I had the opportunity last year around July, actually it was in 2018, to sit with Liz and Eric and to discuss the fundraising issues the museum was having. And I myself had the opportunity to talk to many of the big corporations in the valley, and the lack of certainty or too much uncertainty was causing significant issues for all of the fundraising efforts. So it's important that in this project, the city, as any major project, and I'll just share, I've been very fortunate to have participated of Olympic Games, of organizing two Olympic Games. So when you bring together the community, the government, nonprofits, and corporate in a combined effort to develop or implement any project, that's how you're successful. And I think, I feel there is support, and we talked about this, Liz, you know, but it's really important for the corporate and for a lot of our citizens to feel this support and that there is a joint effort from all the sectors of society to be able to bring this project to fruition. There is no other way. Miss messaging or anything that comes out in the press really turns a lot of the corporate and potential individuals that want to support this project and make them a little bit weary of where this project stands and how important it is for the city of Palo Alto. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. And with that, we're going to conclude public comment on this item and return to council for questions, comments, and motions. The first slide you see is Councilmember Niss.
Thank you. Mayor Fine, so this is a difficult issue that we're dealing with tonight. This is a 20-year issue, and we're dealing with a building that is now 20 years old, that was old actually in 2000 when the city bought it. So I don't know how many, how many of you have been inside the building recently? So would you concur that it's not in very good shape? Some of the old telephones are still in the building. It's seen hard times, and that's one of the reasons that we're having this discussion tonight. All of you who are here have, I know, really put your whole heart into this building and into fundraising. For whatever reason, in that 20 years, the fundraising has not materialized to the point where the building can start. So I'm going to suggest tonight that we go in another direction, and one that I think will still, or hopefully, could allow a museum to exist, but I think we have got to go in a direction that will give us that opportunity. So I am going to try a motion. In fact, though, I think, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, we could move numbers two and three, which are on our board here, because I don't think these are going to cause a lot of discussion, but if we could eliminate those now, I would move that we take the allocation of 65,000 and give it to the Sea Scouts and environmental volunteers, and then authorize the city manager to execute that with the environmental volunteers and so forth.
Great, thank you. And so I guess you're presuming two motions, one is this and another is...
Yes, yes.
Is there a second for, is there a second for parts A and B here?
Sure.
Thank you. So this is a motion by Councilmember Niss, second by Councilmember Phil Seth, to approve items A and B from the staff report, and we'll get, we can discuss this quickly, or we can get back to the main...
Right.
Let's discuss this.
So... So...
Do you want to speak to your motion?
I, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
I agree.
Councilmember Cormac.
It's less straightforward if you weren't on the council, and I wasn't on the council. So if I could just ask staff to sort of walk me through why it's this number and what the email has to do and what it's going to be used for. Not opposed, it's just wasn't clear from the report exactly how we ended up in this position.
So there was an initial sale of TDRs, and I'm going in large part off of the email myself. In the discussion that I recall from 2018, it was Councilmember Scharf, I believe at the time, that made the motion based on kind of this letter that came into the city council at that time. And I, I believe there was sort of a 10% figure put out there as the basis for the 65K. And the, in terms of what will be used for, we, in the staff report, I believe, mentioned the, the mission of the environmental volunteers. So it's, at the time of the motion by city council, it was not prescribed for specific use. So what we would propose to have in the city manager executed use agreement would be something along the lines of uses that comply or support the mission of the environmental volunteers.
Okay. And there's room in the council contingency fund? What does it stand at?
Yes, there is. And that action was taken forward with the close of last year's budget as a reappropriation.
Okay, so it's just been sitting there, we just haven't taken action?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments on this piece? All right. Would you please vote on the board for items A and B here?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So that part passes unanimously, six to nothing, with Councilmember Koo absent. Councilmember Niss, I'll return to you if you want to speak to the remainder of the item.
Yes, so, so now I'm, I'm going to go maybe backwards in this. So if you look at page one of your report for tonight, where you have the summary and discussion and so forth, I think we need to look at other opportunities tonight. In good part, it's because I'm concerned about this building. I actually sat here on the council when we bought the building 20 years ago. I remember what the intent was. I remember who spearheaded it, and many of you knew Gary Fazino. Gary was a history buff. He was convinced that if there was anything, anything like this that could be saved and utilized and made a museum, this would be perfect. For some reason, it hasn't caught fire through the years. I don't know why, and maybe fire isn't quite the right word, but it hasn't caught the enthusiasm such that money has poured in. There have been some nice pledges, but we haven't reached that 9.2, which, as you also have said, talking to staff, Vance Brown said is probably more like 10-point-whatever it is now, given the construction costs that have gone up. So let me suggest the following, that we move forward with the options for an RFP, including potential rezoning of the site. The site currently is PF, so it would have to be rezoned. Additionally, include a possible shared space arrangement, which would mean the obvious. If I get a second, I'll speak to that in a minute. And then return by the first Monday in May with these new opportunities so that we can, we can find out then what the interest actually is in the community. So that's my motion. I'll wait for a second if I get one, and then I'll continue to speak.
I'm happy to second, waiting staff on the dates you were describing.
Thank you. So may I speak to my first?
Sure. So Councilmember Niss has moved, seconded by Councilmember Cormac, to move forward with an option for an RFP, including a potential rezoning of the site, a shared space arrangement, and return by the first Monday in May, which I understand Councilmember Cormac and staff...
And instead of just the first Monday in May, maybe somebody will tell me what the first Monday date is in May.
Okay. And if you'd like to speak to your motion.
So, so I'm bringing this forth very reluctantly tonight. I sat here now for another eight years, practically seven anyway, and we have discussed this any number of times. The last time we were here, when we considered very carefully going, the route we're going tonight, I suggested then to Laura and others that we would match a 1.75 amount that they could raise, that we would then put that up. The problem happened, I, I don't know how, and Laura will have to explain this to you, but somehow the 1.75 that was raised ended up also being what the expenses were in order to continue the fundraising. So looking at it from that standpoint, I think we need to explore how else we can come up with the amount of money to, to save this building. For me, it's very important to have that as a part of our city, to have it as a building that we can be proud of and that we can consider actually having a museum in the future. So this method, this method hasn't used, but I think there probably are methods that would work. So I would encourage us to consider this tonight, consider new options for an RFP. It's been, I think the last RFP was actually looking down 2007?
Five.
2005. So it's been 15 years that we've been working under, under the same, same arrangements. And I think it's time for us to go on to, to whatever the next chapter may be. So let me stop there and...
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. This is, you know, no one wants to do this. I certainly don't take any pleasure in this, but I do feel a responsibility, given it's an asset that's, you know, Councilmember Niss asked me if I'd been in there, and I said the last time I was in there is when I was pregnant with my daughter, who's 22. And so it's, yeah, it's, it's past time to, to make a decision. And I think it falls to us this evening to do that. Before I say a few more words, let me just ask about the May 4th. I think from the staff report, it sounded like the RFP would take an entire year. So would staff like to just discuss the timing here and what might be possible?
You are correct, Councilmember Cormac. It's unlikely that we would be able to have RFP results by May 4th back to the city council, but perhaps another option would be some sort of check-in.
If you could bring the microphone a little closer to you.
Sorry. You are correct. The ability for staff to bring forward the results of an RFP by May 4th would be extraordinarily difficult. However, potentially, an option could be, staff would bring forward a status update or a check-in at that point. Likely, the RFP will take multiple months for staff to craft in coordination with the history museum on what a potential shared space arrangement would be specifically, then the solicitation process and review of those proposals.
I think that would be more a check-in point than it would be to have an actual RFP in, in hand.
All right.
But we need to know what, what's out there.
Understood.
And will we get any feedback even in that length of time? I don't want us to. The building's not getting any younger.
Okay, so staff is comfortable with this as written?
Yeah, I think the term was a status report, return by Monday with a status report on new opportunities?
With a status report. And the maker accepts that?
The status report is fine.
Great, okay.
Whatever staff feels is realistic.
Okay. And I'll just say that I, I appreciate the report from staff. MGO's report was very thorough. Those of us who have done extensive fundraising, I certainly appreciate the analysis and also frankly, the operating recommendations. I realize this was a grassroots effort and, you know, controls are being put in place, and yet it, it does appear that, you know, more, more would be appropriate. I think we have a unit, you know, maybe three types of alternatives. One is a restart, which is what I kind of view this as. One is muddle along, which I think we've been doing for a long time. And then the option that some people suggested tonight, which is that the city would just fund it ourselves. Having gone through our capital projects earlier this evening and having gone through the lengthy list of, you know, one of them, you know, grade separation or Coverley, those are enormously expensive projects. I, I don't believe it's appropriate for the city to fund this entirely on our, on our own. And I think the muddle along strategy has gotten us to the point where it's time to make a decision, and that's why I'm supporting Councilmember Niss's motion. You know, people have already discussed how old the cost estimate is. Yeah, a little scary if we take the ratio that Director Eggleston was using earlier today. I don't even want to do that math on what it, what it might look like tonight. So again, this is not something that anyone wants to do, but I do think we're at the point where it's time to go in a new direction.
Thank you. Any comments, Councilmember Shnaka or Phil Seth? Councilmember Phil Seth?
Well, this will only be, only be a, a partial comment, I think. Actually, let me ask you a question. Is there any parking at this thing, at this building? None at all? So, so where am I going to start here? So first of all, the, I mean, it looks to me like actually the gap is not 2.9 million or 2.2 million or something like that. It's probably close to 5 million, right? Because they've got 6.2 million. It's going to cost 10 and a half or something like that just for phase one. So we got to, I mean, it's like four or $5 million that has to be come up with here. And as, as, as Liz said, you know, a lot of good work has been done and a lot of money's been raised, but it, it looks like a long way to get there under the sort of the status quo, probably, I believe you called it the muddle along process, right? And, you know, I mean, I, I agree with, I think, everybody up here that number one priority is to preserve the building. It's a beautiful building, and it, we, the, the status quo, it gets worse every year, and I think we need to step in and do something. And so the RFP makes sense. What gives me a little bit of pause is we have not really considered, and Councilmember Cormac just alluded to, we have not really considered the possibility that the city should just fund it. I don't know if we should or not, that the city should just throw in the $5 million. All the discussions we've had over the years with, with PAM has been, we'll extend the lease, we'll contribute a little bit, we will match something, but the onus is on the fundraising. And I don't, I don't recall us ever having the discussion of, should the city, should the city fund it? And it seems, as we go forward here, that there ought to be some mechanism for us to have that discussion. Now, maybe it's a simple discussion, and we can just decide it tonight, right? But it seems like we're omitting something if we don't at least have that discussion. And it's relevant also because of the, the co-locating and co-sharing option, which I think is an interesting idea. The only way I can think of that the co-sharing would be between the history museum and the city would be is if the city funded it, okay? If we go outside for a private party, then it's, it's going to be co-shared between the city and the private party, not the history museum and so forth, I think, right? Unless somebody smarter can, can figure that out. But I do agree that the muddle along process, I wouldn't support. And also, to stabilize the Roth Building, where, you know, we, we spend part of the $5 million and then don't have a building, right, at the end of it, I don't think makes sense either, right? So I think, and I'm not sure how this fits in, I think there ought to be a way for us to have the discussion of, should the city throw in the $5 million, right? And, and maybe it's simple. The other one is with respect to the RFP, I would hope, and maybe this, maybe this is inherent in it, is that, you know, if we do do a, in an arrangement with a private party, maybe there's some mechanism that there's a sunset date, and so 30 years from now, it reverts to the city, you know, after, after all the, the capital work has been done and so forth. Because, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure it need to, I mean, do you want to add an amendment, or I think the city can, is that enough, to consider a, consider an RFP with a sunset that it reverts to the city at some point?
I think the, the broad direction as stated is sufficient to give us that as an option.
Okay. So let me ask the question. How do we consider the, how do we consider the idea that the, that the city just fund the $5 million? And, and either it stays as a history museum or it ends up as a, a co-sharing kind of arrangement, or we end up leasing it out to a, a private party?
Is that a version of B?
That's a, that's a, that's a, uh, yeah, I guess it is.
I think maybe, maybe if we're just a little bit more specific on B.
Yeah, inclusive, possibly, and including, including the possibility that the city funds, funds, funds the, the restoration. Is that, right?
I think it's separate.
Yeah. I'm trying to, I'm trying to better define possible shared space arrangement, which if you are not sitting here, might not be clear to you.
Yeah.
But you could create a D that says during the length of time before we get the status report, the city could examine the possibility of another $5 million.
It's, yeah, the city and the council, right?
Yes.
The council would have to examine that.
Well, we are the city.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, the city, the city discussed the possibility. So a D would be, discuss the possibility that, that the city fund the gap.
Should this be referred to finance?
I, probably. I mean, I assume it would have to be budgeted and referred to finance.
Maybe D should be a referral to finance.
That seems logical.
So is that accepted by the maker and the seconder?
Yes, although I, I do think we could, I mean, B, I'm sorry, I'm sure that people sitting here understand that, but I'm not, if we could just be a little bit more clear about B.
About DOB.
B. B as in boy.
So I think the shared space arrangement is on page eight of the report.
Oh, it's a specific reference.
And so the city and Palo Alto History Museum could work together, potentially with another partner, to share the 20,000 square foot facility so it would not be solely occupied by the history museum.
Okay, that's fine.
And so again, some people have mentioned, maybe it's the city archives, maybe it's a cafe, whatever.
Okay, got it, thanks.
To, to add one thing, however, to this last discussion, and I think Laura would agree with this. The building is one thing. We can build the building out. The building could be scoped in such a way that it would accommodate a museum, but the amount, and I haven't heard any of the group mention this lately, but there is another enormous cost, which then comes from actually fitting out the museum. And I have seen the plans in the past, which are, which are lovely, but quite extensive and, and very electronically, as I recall, controlled. So I don't know what the amount would be to finish off the museum. Could we indulge Laura and let us, so if you just add that, that amount in. So let's say now we've, we've got this wonderful new museum. What is it going to cost you to outfit it?
Right. You want to have something in there when people come in, and it needs to impress them. Our full budgeted build out for the museum is 8.8 million, of which 2 million is already secured with one of the pledges previously mentioned. And we've had, we believe that if we can concentrate on developing the museum, and again, get out of the construction business, that, that that will grow from there. 2 million is, is a nice way to start the museum. We've engaged with Palo Alto Weekly to talk with them about exhibit possibilities. We have one we've been working on called I Am Palo Alto, and some other prospects as well, so that there'd be something, you know, say we were to open the museum in one and a half or two years, what would be there? And then as we progress on a permanent history exhibit, which would be a larger investment.
But, but what you're saying is that once the building is completely ready to, and move in shape, it's still another 2 million even then to put something...
Another eight, so that...
8 million to really make it fabulous.
So the eight is after phase one?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Right.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
I didn't want us to forget, something needs to go in the building eventually.
If I could just add on appendix A, we're doing most of those recommended things, and the others are on our to-do list. So please don't feel that we, we've never heard those words like 990 before.
Just a quick, thanks. Just a quick couple of comments. Thank you guys very much for the report and the audit, I guess we can call it. Really helpful and kind of informative about some of the different strategies we can take and the costs along with them. And Councilmember Niss, thank you for that last question. You know, as Councilmember Phil Seth mentioned, it's probably closer to $5 million just to finish the building, and then you have a building that's finished. finish the building, and then you have a building that's finished but no museum, and so that's a whole nother phase I think we all need to be aware of and the cost there. Councilmember Cormac, I think you had a nice set of, you know, status quo slash muddling along, or, you know, complete reset. And something that really kind of stood out to me is that the expenses have been tracking the income for almost 15, 20 years now. And that indicates we may need to change some of our approach here. So I think the restart is appropriate. It does allow us to preserve this building and bring it to shipshape as needed, ideally, and I like the metaphor of, you know, going to bat without a bat. Ideally, it can kickstart some of the fundraising for the actual museum portion, if we're taking on some of the risk for the actual preservation of the building. And then I like this motion because it does have the alternative options in letter B, and potentially even letter A. One or two quick questions. Would the RFP or potential rezoning, would that in any way affect any of the grants that have been secured so far?
It could. The one county grant that we have is for, as mentioned earlier, $100,000 for the roof. As part of the county grant, you may recall from 2018, there was an approval of a resolution saying that the building would be open and operated as a park, per the county park guidelines, so to speak. In other words, any county visitor could go to the park, it would be open park hours like a county park. Now, if we move in a different direction, you know, we haven't taken any of those funds at this point in time, so is there some sort of unwinding from that that could be conceived that's potentially out there? But at this present time, those are the requirements. I should also say that it's not dedicated parkland. It's just designated per that resolution that you guys adopted in December.
So if we go through a rezoning process, we should at least be careful of the implications there on that one grant so far?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's about all my comments. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have comments?
Yeah, I hope you guys can hear me. I actually have some questions. It came up earlier today, but does staff know how much we're spending to lease office Hello?
Yes, we just need a minute to get that information. We do have it for some of our facilities. Let me just bring that up. So for Bryant Street, which we have city staff in, it's about 6,000 square feet, 370,000 roughly annually. And for the development center, about 6,300 square feet, that's about 640 annually.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, I do think it's worth counsel thinking a little bit about other city-owned buildings. You know, I'm thinking about the Art Center, I'm thinking about Avenidas, which used to be a fire station, the Museum of American Heritage, Gamble Gardens. I mean, I don't know if anybody on staff knows, those are city-owned buildings, how much of that did the city fund for the actual building itself? And if you don't know, that's fine, but I think those are interesting examples.
I apologize, Councilmember. Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the city owns other museums. We own the Museum of the American Heritage Building, we own Avenidas Building, or we did, you know, originally, we owned Gamble Garden, we owned the Art Center. Those are examples of buildings that have needed extensive renovations, I'm just wondering how those were funded.
Do not have an answer on that right now, the Councilmember.
Okay. This building's been dedicated as a park, we've accepted county money, what does this mean in regards to the motion?
So, as staff mentioned a little bit earlier, it's actually not been dedicated as a park. There's a legislative resolution that enabled us to secure the grant funding, but can staff fill in the actual specific gap there?
So I don't have the language of the resolution in front of me, but we were very careful not to make a park dedication under Palo Alto's park dedication rules. So we don't have a procedural situation here where any non-park use would require a vote of the people.
But it is, there is a resolution that it is a park today?
I forget exactly the language. There was a resolution that, for the county's purposes of the grant program, it was sufficient that the use would be this type of museum use adjacent to a park. That was acceptable to apply for the county grant. It was always clear to the county that this was not a full park dedication, which is a particular procedure that just applies in Palo Alto. And the county always understood that we were not doing that for this piece of property.
Right, I understand, it's just, is there money that would have to be returned?
So Assistant Director Ramberg said it's possible. It's, again, order of magnitude, this is a $100,000 county grant, so it's a relatively small amount of money.
Right. And then we did, we did say we were going to do a city match, but we never actually did that, right? That's what this discussion is, a couple of years later, is that correct?
Councilmember, could you clarify what city match you're referring to? There's a few times when the city has put forth money towards this project, but are you talking specifically about matching the 1.75 million?
Yes, right.
That's correct, right? That's correct. The last direction from the council was to staff to go validate the goal of raising 1.75 million to determine whether or not the city would match, and that's what we are here tonight reviewing.
Right, okay. So first, I just wanted to start, again, with why we're talking about a history museum in the first place. I think it's really important to keep in mind, Palo Alto is an epicenter of Silicon Valley, and for a town of 67,000 people, I think we're a pretty interesting place. And, you know, some of the public speakers touched on it, but, you know, from the founding of Stanford to the creation of the transistor, to HP and Varian, it's kind of the beginnings of Silicon Valley, to Yahoo, Google, Facebook, from the Chinese and Japanese immigrants to Jerry Garcia and Joe Baez, I mean, we have a lot of really cool, unique things that happen in Palo Alto. I know it's been a long history with the museum. I think 2007, when the city offered the lease option, was really when true fundraising began. So that's been about 13 years. There really hasn't been serious fundraising going on for the 20-year period. And we have all these other examples of city-owned buildings that are museums, and some of them took quite a while, and they are little gems in our city now. So I'm kind of torn here, because we set a goal for the history museum, and I think they have met that goal, and I think we owe them some things that were promised back in December of 2018. So we said we would approve the lease option within six months, in December of 2018, that's now 27 months later. We said we would match their funds, we haven't done that. I do expect that a second round of fundraising, once construction started, would occur. I think people would get excited once they saw things starting to move. You know, to me, it looks like we're about 4 million short for construction. It's less if the donors actually honor the commitments they've made. So the report discounted pretty heavily some of those donations, so I think there's some variability there. But kind of the end for me is, I don't think we should let 4 million, you know, let this project and let the building crumble. I trust Vance Brown, I think they're solid contractors, they've done a great job at Stanford and the Junior Museum, and I think they'll do their best to keep the cost down. This is a city building, and it does need maintenance, but I'm glad to see that we added in the motion consideration of financial support from the city. The city put in, you know, 8.1 million in the Junior Museum, general fund money. We only have $1 million in this so far in general fund, and that was to stabilize the back wall. You know, the TDRs are restricted for historic buildings. Somebody pointed out, the library funds are for the archives, so we need to put those archives somewhere, and I think those funds should stay with the archives. And so it sounds like there's not support tonight to outright funding the museum, which is kind of where I was heading. I do think we should explore a small portion of shared use, and so in my mind, I was more in favor of options two and three, than not option one of opening the RFP. I did want to talk about the shared space option a little bit more. I think we should consider, you know, potentially the city use, as we look at some of these leases, we're spending, it sounded like over $1 million a year in rent. Investing that money in our own building, to me, makes a lot of sense. Or even one of those, you know, maybe half the amount, if we only take smaller square footage. I also think it would be attractive to look at potentially using some of the shared spaces as a nonprofit space, that again, I would imagine the city would fund in our building, but it would also help get the history museum going. And then the third one would be to let the history museum explore some kind of partnership for them to rent it out, and my understanding from the letters in the staff report was that, you know, that was an important lease term that's actually constrained some of the fundraising, that says that they can't do that right now. So I think it's premature to remove the PF zone. You know, I do recommend that we approve the lease option, and that we do what we can to make it more attractive to be able to find donors, and that we really do need to stabilize our building. So I am just trying to look at the current motion here. So I don't know if we could separate the bullet points, I'm less in favor of point When we, point number two, I guess I'd ask the makers, are you open to considering either the city using the shared space, or even potentially supporting nonprofits using the shared space?
The answer to that, Council Vice Mayor DuBois, is yes, and that's as written in the report for the shared space arrangements.
Is it also including just market rate commercial?
Yes.
I think it may. I don't, does staff have a perspective on that?
Well, I think the conversation to be had with the museum is how much less than the whole they could envision, and based upon that, I think that would drive what options are available for others to share the space.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Okay, and then on the last point, is that general enough that the Finance Committee could discuss either funding the build out, or potentially another kind of challenge grant, or kind of look at different options, I guess? This is specifically to fund the build out of the building reconstruction, correct?
This is Councilmember Cormac, Vice Mayor DuBois. I think it refers only to the option that was my third option and the one that Councilmember Phil Seth was describing, that the city funds the rehabilitation of the existing building. It does not, it does not go further than that.
Yeah, I guess I'm suggesting it could be even potentially less than that, it could be some variation. Okay. So again, I'm leaning definitely more heavily towards the bottom parts of the motion, and I'd appreciate maybe if we could even split out the elements. Those are my comments.
So, I think, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We can certainly split out letter A. I think that's the most contentious in your view, is that correct?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, let's vote on part A, if you would please hit your lights.
I would vote no.
Okay, so that passes 5 to 1 with Council, with Vice Mayor DuBois against, and Councilmember Koo absent, and now we will vote on letters B, C, and D, if you would please vote on the board.
I'd vote yes.
And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Koo absent. Okay. Thank you all, thank you to my colleagues for crafting this all together. I think that concludes our last item. So we now move to Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. Councilmember Cormac.
Okay, I have three things. The first requires a costume change. Just want to let you all know that I was recently trained as a block preparedness coordinator, joining only one other member of the council, so there's an opportunity for five of you to participate in our disaster preparedness. Honestly, it's very helpful, and I highly recommend it to members of the community. The other thing, two other things, one is, some of us were able to attend the SRP Go session last week at the Stanford Research Park. Much of the information was the same as last year. One thing that's really remarkable is there are up to 23 van pools at the Research Park, which is remarkable. And the work they've had to do with the VTA, hopefully our VTA representative, the work that Stanford Research Park has done with the VTA to keep the express buses, was a big lift, and a place that we could continue to be helpful. And then finally, it was published earlier today, but the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority has a new, our executive director, Len Maderman, is leaving and will be the president of the San Mateo Flood Resiliency District. I think I'm missing about seven words in this title. So the SFC JPA will be looking for a new executive director, and I'm on the ad hoc search committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac, and thank you for keeping us all safe. Quick comments, last week as a local policymakers group at Caltrain, we had an update from High-Speed Rail. They are roughly proceeding on track, they are still working on Proposition 1A funds, they are focusing on the section from, I think it's Madera to Bakersfield, and over the next three or four months, they are releasing the EIRs for each of the project's sections. So I think it's in April, they've got the section from San Jose to Madera, that's pretty much our section, including everything south of Gilroy, so a lot to come there, but they're releasing EIRs month by month and hosting a series of community meetings. But they were trying to communicate, they think they're on track, so, seems to change year to year. Councilmember Ness?
So just a reminder that we are dark next Monday night, aren't we?
Yes.
I'm planning to not be here, so, because unless it gets canceled, four of us will be back at the National League of Cities, and we've heard nothing yet, so I presume that we're going to go wearing our masks and our shower caps and so forth, and be back in DC. It should be a very interesting time. In fact, I think it'll be just fascinating. I wonder who else will drop out by then, we'll find out.
Okay, well, it is 9:55, I believe Councilmember Vice Mayor DuBois dropped off just a moment ago, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.